There we go. Welcome, everyone. Council chambers for committee of the whole. Tuesday, March fourth, twenty twenty five. We would like to begin this meeting by acknowledging that we are gathered on the traditional ancestral and unceded territories of the Inca Kappa and Silk People. Adoption of minutes, two point one, committee of the whole minutes, January seventh, twenty twenty five. Recommendation that the minutes of the committee of the whole meeting held on January seventh, twenty twenty five be adopted. Counselor Egan, Counselor Ogan, any errors or omissions? Excellent. Anyone else? All those in favor? Pose, carry, thank you. No, 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 five point one economic development strategy plan review. Who takes that one?
See you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So in council meeting recently, I presented you with sort of a an update document to see where some of our economic development strategy had progressed over the last couple of years. Obviously, this strategy came into effect right after the flood in twenty twenty two, so some of the work would have happened pre-flood. And it's a hefty document, as we noted in the last time we discussed it, has many, 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 many plans. Over up to twenty thirty one. Some of them are not necessarily needed in a strategic document, as some of them are actually just the work we do, like budgeting for infrastructure renewal. That's just part of what municipal government is about. If we didn't do that, we wouldn't have a city. But what I'd like to do, what we talked about was coming together to talk a bit more about what the priority items are over the next three to five years. To give the department a bit more direction, because I think ultimately over the last couple of years, there hasn't been sufficient direction for moving priorities forward. It's been hit and miss, and we've accomplished some things, but I don't know how purposeful those accomplishments were. So if we could do that, that would be ideal, just to give a sense of if we went from like a one to what did I say, a one to five, I think? Or take it right out of the priorities until, you know, five years down the road. And then we would update, provide a more updated document to council in regards to what the next steps are. Counselor Ogan.
Counselor Ogan, sorry. Thank you. So it's a long document for sure. And I can remember the page, but there is a detailed plan of what is expected to be accomplished. Can you go over what has been accomplished versus what is listed in the plan, please?
So in the document that I had originally provided, there are a number of items that have had some work done on them. There are probably, I would say, no items that have been fully accomplished at this point. To meet any I mean, measure of success completed city center revitalization plan, implementation of action items. That's not a particularly smart goal. Because we don't know what the meant for outcome is for that. It's pretty vague. So most of the things that we've done are more in relation to things that have been started, or we have identified might be the domain of other organizations that we're just providing support to, and things that we have identified for our economic development projects for this year, based on the funding that we still have from the ministry. So I actually don't think there's anything that's been completed. To quite honestly, nope, nothing. So that's a bit disappointing, and that's what happens when we don't have a solid direction to go forward on with. You know, there's a lot of stuff that's identified to be done every year. Some of this items are blocked off for the entire period of time. Many things are blocked off for the beginning of the plan, the first two, three, four years. So that's a lot to do with only one economic development staff member.
Counselor Richard.
While there might not be something particularly specific out of the plan, the idea that we had in there was focusing on the revitalization, small neighborhoods where you could have a lot of items in one area, like housing near the downtown. So of course, last council term, we were hoping to have started maybe more housing projects, like with various land pieces, which is, you know, taking a backseat for, because of the flood and other things. But the development at the airport was a focus at the time, so I know we had applied for a grant, which some work was done at the airport, so that was a focus. And trying to encourage things like warehousing and activity near the truck route. And that's one reason why I'm usually in support of development, like what we had around Midi Valley Road, where Mako's being built, because that was a focus of having commercial business around those areas. So that was a vision of council last term. And so I see that we're working towards that, so maybe no exact finished projects, you know, according to this plan, but the attitude of council at the time was to be working towards things, whether it be manufacturing and things along the trajectory, which with our recent rezoning, I think we can, we're more moving forward to that direction. So maybe nothing done, buttoned up, but things take time, so.
And sometimes these plans, if I may, Mr. Mayor, are shoot for the star plans, which are great when you're thinking about all the things you could do, but not necessarily great when you don't have the resources to do them. So, you know, the biggest parts are those biggest priority areas are promote a vibrant city center. That's a huge project. Sorry, it's got many pages. It has eighteen, I believe, strategic items. Economic diversification and growth. Very large portfolio. The next one is business attraction and retention. Very large portfolio. Increased residential housing supply. Just to get funding is a large portfolio. Commercialization of the mayor airport area. Again, that's another large. So we have a lot of parts of the community that we're identifying that could benefit from some attention. However, each of these is ultimately its own plan.
Counselor Ogan.
Yeah, so I was just going to mention the five different priorities that you have mentioned right now. So I feel like in order to make a project work specifically in a small communities, we have to identify the short term versus long term goals. So for that, there are different organizations that, you know, if we work together with different organizations, for example, economic diversification, so business attraction and retention, so Chamber of Commerce, economic diversification, community futures, increased housing supply. So we have to work with these different organizations to understand what can be done and when that can be done. So where is the status with the Economic Development Committee? Because it could be ideal for them to review these ones and present recommendations to council, so that we can just go over those recommendations.
So the committee was not necessarily as productive as we would have liked. So we have put it on hold until we can formulate a Economic Development Advisory Board that is a bit more not as potentially large, right? The committee was very large. Anybody who had an area adjacent to economic development or tourism was sitting together. That sometimes meetings were twenty people. Yeah, the round tables. Yeah, yeah, that's a very big round table. So we need to develop an Economic Development Advisory Board that is more specific and a little bit smaller with people who are interested in that, whether or not they belong to the chamber, or they belong to Community Futures or another organization, just a little bit of a broader, maybe business owners, people who are interested in helping to move this forward, but not unruly sized.
So for my time when we were on that that round table, it started off with promise, but then it started to wander. We ended up being more of a bulletin board of our events for groups that were at, we really weren't looking at how we could move the community forward, and that may not have been the exact right group for that to happen. So I mean, we did like some of the things that was coming forward, but it just seemed to it just seemed to start to lose steam after a while, just didn't feel like we were accomplishing anything. So I think maybe the idea of a little bit more focused group with people that do have you know, economic ideas, where it's not going to be an update on your, like, what's happening at the Bailey House, what's happening with the city, what's happening at the pool. That's not what, that's not what we're looking for. So I mean, I appreciated what we had, and it was a good idea, but it quickly lost traction. I just didn't feel like it was really going anywhere. Counselor Egan?
Yeah, thank you. I just wanted to say that I think that that particular group, I agree with the, with the mayor on that. But I was thinking more in terms of the city group that we had formed as an Economic Development Committee. And I think we have to have the asset management in place before you can go and ask for, for input.
That you mean the, the land?
Yes, land, and you know, where do we want to go? Where do we see merit going? And I'm sure that that's what that the other little forum that we all went to in various groups was supposed to ascertain, but I don't think we got, I don't think that came out. I'm not sure how you guys figured out what you learned from that, but the ones that I went to, I don't think there was a lot that came out of that. And then I've heard that from the business group. They didn't get, they didn't get that either.
So, I mean, ultimately, that is our marketing strategy. So it's not necessarily it's not necessarily that what you saw in that marketing part was everything, right? They are also looking at are doing a SWOT analysis and looking at what kinds of industries we match with.
What the SWOT?
Yeah, so strengths, weakness, opportunities and threats analysis. So that basically tells us, like, let's say we choose industry A and industry B is two potential industries we want to bring in. We have all of these things that match with industry A, but we're missing this one big thing. That would make them a good fit. So that's the research that has to be done in order to determine where we're going in regards to spending our time and focusing on.
But we still need to know what our assets are.
And we're in the midst of that. It takes many, many work. It's not an immediate thing.
Talking to people, finding out what land is available. You know, whether it's owned by the city or owned by somebody else, do they want to hold on to it, or do they want to give it up? Because maybe we have something that we can say, hey, you know, this is, this is an industry that would really benefit from your property.
And that's currently underway. We've got a list that we're working through.
Okay, well, I'm supposed to be sitting on that committee, and I want to know.
It's not a committee, counselor. It was a staff group to assign work. And we invited you because you had a specific interest in that.
And I'm still waiting for my assignment.
And you're, and because we're not there yet, our staff are working multiple opportunities to try and get this done, but we're in the midst of collecting data about properties, city-owned and privately-owned properties that are both on the market and not, and what those resources are. So I provided you with that or that pamphlet that had a couple of properties, because we had the province reach out to us with an industry that was looking for land. So they were doing a site selection review. And we provided the property, the size, the cost per acre, what the amenities of the property were, what the key points of the property were, how it is aligned with the transportation system, where was it in location to the transportation system? That's, we need all of that data. We can't do anything with all of that data. There is nowhere where that data sits. So we're in the midst of collecting that data.
Okay, I get it.
Yeah, it's a, it's a bit more of a process than one might imagine.
So just an update, at the beginning of every term, we set committees. We had the airport committee, we had the police committee, we had the policy review committee. Now, we did throw out for economic development, and we had zero takers. We threw it up for a second time, and we had zero takers. So we have tried twice to have a off-site economic development committee and have had no takers. Or not enough to actually make it work. Two won't work. We needed, so possibly maybe we throw it out again to see if we could again form. I think as we're moving forward here, especially with some of the things that we're seeing in the community now, and with, you know, tariffs, let's be honest here, and Canadian-made and shop local and, and, you know, hundred-mile diet and all that kind of stuff. Maybe it's time that we do that again, throw out a fishing line and see if we can actually get an economic development committee formed. And then kind of work with that and work on this. Now, on this, I'm going to be honest with you, I've only had this two days, so I'm looking through it a lot. I know on council meetings, we don't make any decisions. But I need to look at this more before.
You saw this several weeks ago.
Yeah, I know, but I'm still seeing things that I didn't think I saw before, so.
So I do think it's important to put out that opportunity for another Economic Development Advisory Board. I do think that if we're unable to get a working board, that people do express interest, then we have to come up with some sort of collaborative other way of running it. So I think what Counselor Egan is talking about with bringing my staff team in with the two or three or however many people, that we have to do this to start moving things forward. So we just, I think it's worth, hundred percent worth putting out another call for Economic Development Advisory Board.
Counselor Turner.
This is a long document, but it's extremely well-written. It's very informative, and I think if we could accomplish all of this, we would be a golden town. I think one of the problems is a lot of these things require money. And right now, we don't have any money. So I think one of our biggest goals is to build up our tax base through industry, which then allows us to accomplish a lot of these goals. And I think we have to be goal-oriented, take parts of this report, focus on it, and when we've accomplished that, go on to the next step, instead of trying to do all of it at once, do it step by step. And I think if we approach it that way, we will eventually accomplish all of the goals that are written in there.
Yeah, I don't think it's a ten-year plan, and I think, I think it's way too, too big for a ten-year plan. I do think that the industry and knowing what our attractions are for industry, so that's part of our marketing plan, but also part of our place-making plan, right? Who are we? Who are we selling, who are we as, as we're selling ourselves to the world? Right? And, you know, we can, like the consultant said, we can say we're the gateway to wilderness, we're the most beautiful place in B C. Well, that's very standard for B C. We're not even the sunniest place in B C. Technically, we don't, there are places that get more sunny days than we do. But we have a unique opportunity to play with our, our tagline. That we've kind of been looking at some ideas. But that's part of this, who are we selling to and how are we selling ourselves? Are we selling ourselves as, you know, that small-town feel, but all the big-city amenities? Are we selling ourselves as the, you know, as a, as a place where we want young families to come to? Are we selling ourselves as a place we want people who are retiring to come to? And that's really the part we don't have. And, and you're right, we don't have in our operational budget to do all this work. We're lucky, we're in a position right now where we have the grant money. Still, the almost five hundred thousand dollars of grant money that we're able to do a labor market study with. We're able to do the marketing plan. We're able to do the place-making project that's coming up to talk about, and all of those things will come together into something that we can package to the world. Ultimately, that's what we're looking for, is a package to sell.
Counselor Petrosi.
Mayor Getz, because you've been in politics here for a while, a DBA, Downtown Business Association. Has there been one in the past, and is there?
There, we have been after the downtown several times to form a DBA. There, we brought the gentleman in from North Kemluk to speak to us about that, the one that's been created over there. And there was an attempt when I was on council. A few of the gentlemen got together, there was a deal with a parking issue. They came together as a DBA, but it, it, again, it, it didn't last, it lost steam, it fell apart. There has been, you know, it would be nice to see it, but that, that's basically, you know, the city could help to build it, but it's up to the people who are downtown.
Right.
But it has been suggested several times, and yeah, it might be.
I just see so much opportunity downtown with the empty lots, empty buildings, and wanting to, you know, people to shop local, right? So whether we try to set something up or push that again, I don't know, but it's downtown.
It's something that, I mean, maybe with the Economic Development Group or panel, whatever the hell, there's something discussed at that point to see where that goes. There are some people that are passionate about it, some people don't think it does anything. It all depends.
Thank you.
Counselor Ogan.
So this strategy was implemented in twenty twenty-two. So three years later, so we don't have any tangible. So that's my biggest concern. So it was discussed in the past, I believe that C A O mentioned that the intention was to bring an economic development person later on. So I think that it could be key to bring that person right now in this, in this moment, so that it's involved in this transition, not when everything has been identified. We need to have that person going through that assessment to understand what's going to be our key priorities as community, and what is achievable and what, what is not. So I have already expressed my, my, my concerns, and I have already expressed my desire to hire a economic development corporation. As other municipalities have done, in Chillicothe, Colonna, and other municipalities in B C. And it has been very well-accepted, and you can see the tangible results. If I ask right now, what are the tangible results for the past ten years? So we can go over that one, when the economic development has been delivered in-house. So it can be a big difference, right? So I think that we have to to, it's time to revisit and think outside the box to be able to get something achieved in the, in the short-term goal.
And I don't disagree with that. I think when we talk about developing, hiring an economic development corporation, that might be the way to go. Ultimately, the projects we're doing right now are being done by economic development people, marketing people, community development people. And we don't know what the scope of work is for an economic development corporation until some of these projects get done. So, you know, if we're talking about bringing someone on or bringing a corporation on without a clear vision as to what the community wants, especially a corporation, like, you know, an outside consulting agency, you know, there's just going to be a significant cost to that. This, this gives us an opportunity to right-size it for our community. Because you get plans like this that are often cut and paste from other communities, right? Lots of consultants use the same plans over and over and over again. And so we want to make sure that we've right-sized it for our community versus jumping in without having a full, real sense of what the scope of work is. And that's what I'm hoping to do this year, is get that scope of work so that we can put on an RFP for a consulting company to come in and potentially run our to get a cost. We don't even know what the cost of getting a corporation in our consultant in is at this point versus having an in-house person. And really, that's going to depend on scope of work.
Anyone else?
So I guess what I, I would like to kind of get out of this is, where do you want us to be focusing our efforts? Because right now, we are really focusing on trying to, to to identify who we are to package it. And then who we're sending that sales package to. And does that seem like the right thing? Like, do we focus on the, on the lands at the, at the airports or development at the airport, or are we looking at something broader in regards to just making those connections, right? Because in the, in the plan, it says cold-call industry. Okay, you could spend a year cold-calling industry before you get a match, right? But we want to be able to narrow that focus down somewhat to make that match and those cold calls more meaningful. Because we can, we know what we're selling to that industry.
Okay, so.
Hold on, Coach Sutcher.
Well, I think within the plan, we were talking specifically about warehousing, merchandising, things that could be done along the truck route. One of the developments was suggested that we might see a development permit for manufactured home warehousing site, which would be ideal, because merit is being so close to all the highways. It's a central location, much like Barkman, with all the pieces of that they offer for lawns and building and everything like that. It's ideal that it can be out at interior B C. So I think within the project, that's some of the pieces that were in there. I mean, it is a long document, but I think the whole idea was that at least we have an idea of a plan, but I, I do agree that we could maybe look at some of our top ideas, because it's too large. I do agree with that statement, but I think it was mentioned in here that things that are focused to our benefit, highway accessibility, smaller community near other centers, merit is a smaller community where people can afford to live, families can afford to move here and have a nice quality of life, maybe with housing that's more attractively priced as opposed to a city like Surrey, or Vancouver, where it's expensive and you can't have a yard. So we have a lot of benefits for families that would like to live here. So that was the idea that was presented to us last term, and, and, and it is a large document here, but maybe we can just look at some ideas. I mean, I'm hopeful that the Midi Valley project will have a lot more development up there, and if, if a developer comes in and wanting to have a housing project at the end of Hill Street, which was originally proposed, I think, a few years ago with townhouses and modular homes, that would be ideal, but plans keep changing, so I don't know if that's still the intention for the owner of that land, but it would be nice, but anyway.
Counselor Egan.
Yeah, I just wanted to know, do you think that it could be done better in-house at this point, or spending a lot of money buying, you know, some kind of economic development corporation?
I genuinely think that we need to have a direction before we invest in spending money and consultants, because we, we don't know what we don't even know, right? We're, we're in a place where a consultant will be able to come in, once we have a scope of work, and implement that scope of work, but we don't have a scope of work.
That's right.
And so until we get that scope of work through understanding, you know, our labor market study. So if, if, how many people in this community are tradespeople? How many are plumbers? How many are electricians? How many are skilled laborers? How many are mill rights? How many are, you know, how many people are graduating from N V I T and true and willing to move here? How many people? Like, we need to know who those people are, so we know what kind of industries we're attracting. Right? So that's the labor market study, is really understanding that. We need to know, you know, in relation to housing, what are the types of employers we're going to have, and what are those wage ranges? So we know what kind of housing needs to be built. No point in building a seven hundred fifty thousand dollar house if people are making a household income of seventy thousand dollars a year. Right? We need to focus on smaller housing, more affordable housing, or housing that is maybe multi-unit, that sort of thing, right? Like, we have to find that, that information. And we can't know that until we have all of our assets. So not just the land, but who we have here as assets. What types of connections? So if, you know, certain types of businesses align perfectly well or provide something in the, in the supply chain to another type of business, right? And we have to know what that is. You know, there are communities that, there's a community, I can't remember where, but they basically, they're, they have an industrial area that is full of bathroom stuff. Somebody started building bathtubs there, and now they have a whole industrial area full of bathtub stuff. Right? So adjacent industries, people in the supply chain, that, that one type of industry. Do we want to be a green community? Do we only want to focus on green industry? You know, warehousing is great, except not necessarily high volume of jobs. Right? And if we're, say, we lose an industry that has been here traditionally, and we only gain industries that employ three or four people, that's not necessarily we want to go.
So just to change it a little bit, is that we're talking about if we do it in-house within the city. I mean, we've been working on this now since, what, the end of November meeting? And how much longer do you think that that's going to take?
Well, it's, I mean, it's, it's a solid year for sure. It's probably a year and a half, just to get a scope of work.
Really?
Yeah, it's, it's.
I don't think it should take that long.
Consultants, this is what, this is what you do when you do studies. Studies take four, six months.
We're not consultants. We're just, we can go around and talk to people.
But we're, but we have consultants engaged, right? Because they are the people who have time to do the research. I'm not going to research industry, that on top of everything else I do.
I thought that's what we were going to do.
No, that's what we brought consultants in for.
I know, but that was one of the jobs I could have done.
Researching industries?
Yes.
Okay. That's a very big job.
Yeah, well, I guess I have time to do it, because I think I could do it faster than a year and a half. Sorry, but I think I could.
Well, my experience is that it's a little more challenging.
Okay, so I think also too, one of the things that we have to take into consideration is that we have people that own land in this community. Chris Langhouse here. We have Sterling Hunt. I think also too, we need to bring them into the picture to find out what they would like to see, what their holdups are. What they plan on doing with their land, in our land inventory. You know, you're right, cold calls don't work, but sometimes they do.
And we've actually been in touch with many of those people.
But I'm just saying, I think they need to be part of that picture.
I think Mr. Lang was just at our last consulting, consultant meeting, yeah.
Yeah, and I just, and that's because we found very early on, especially my first year, I had several hundred meetings with these people because they were unhappy, and now we're moving forward in a better light. So I would like to get most of these people involved with what they would like to see as we move forward, what they can bring to the So I would like to get most of these people involved with what they would like to see as we move forward, what they can bring to the community. Then we need to start talking to people who are uh talking about building, you know, apartments and housing, because we need that to work hand in hand. Because we, it's great to bring in ten, fifteen businesses that are hiring three to four hundred people and all of a sudden we've got a thousand extra people nowhere to live. So it works. So we need to tackle that aspect of it as well uh as we move forward. So. With this document, I think, you know, a bit of homework for me and all of us is to, you know, come up with what we think we need to move on. That's just my two cents. Any other two cents? Oh, sorry.
I think you were reading my notes.
Nope.
Um, that was this thing I was going to bring that um all of this um property that we have, that city-owned uh Chris Langhouse. Bring the stakeholders together and get an idea of what they envision their their. Their land can be used for and then. Go from theirs, we'll have a solid base of of what their land could be used for. And what type of marketing are they are they uh going for? And then we use that as a basis for expanding and. If we do cold calls, we do cold calls.
So those, that's actually already been done, that they were, many of those people were invited and did not attend our consultation. Our engagement session and so the staff spent a great deal of time. They called and they emailed. So um that is, we'll continue to do that because that's the right thing to do, but I want to just be clear. That we can only engage people who want to be engaged. So people like Mr. Langhow, who tended and has been actively involved with our planning and development department. Clearly has a vision and has been able to discuss some of that with us. We have another developer that's currently going through the development process. Um, for some additional housing, um higher density housing, who has a vision for their land. Um, so we definitely are getting that both from speaking to them. Um, directly about plans like this or through what they're doing in development and what they're inquiring about in development. Could they do this on this land? Could they do this? How would this work? Like, we have those conversations on a regular basis. So the staff are pretty well informed about what people's vision currently is and whether or not that vision is. You know, whether or not we need to look at the O C P again around trying to make some of these things come true. Um, which is great because we have to do the O C P this year as part of the housing legislation, right? So all of this stuff. All of these things come together into a package, right? Do we need to rezone things? Do we need to be looking at um? You know, changing how modular homes are dealt with in the city. Do we need to change how um downtown businesses or new buildings in downtown, what their design standards have to meet? The exterior design standards have to meet. This is the opportunity to do all of that stuff. With the co- community consultation. So when we do all of these packages together, there's been a lot of outreach around the labor market study. So there's a bunch of businesses on their list um and surveys that that will be going out. Next week, I think, about that. There's the consultations, there's the, you know, the place-making when we start talking about what do we want our. Particularly our downtown to look like. What what are the things that are gonna draw people? We have great tra-, you know, great walk pa- walking paths around the city. What else do we need to sell those walking paths? Um, you know, so we have good pedestrian connectivity around a good part of the city. Is that an investment council wants to continue to make or do we feel like we're, we've done enough? You know, those are the things that we. We have to bring people together and 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 that's what we have the consultants for, because if we tried to do all of this internally. I wouldn't do anything else.
So when you say you invited them all, was that to that um group um committee or were they invited personally to a a one-on-one meeting?
They were not invited to one-on-one meetings because that would be extremely time-intensive and extremely expensive.
Well, I don't don't see if Friday at two o'clock, would you please come and or Friday at twelve o'clock, we have a luncheon. You know, invite them personally to to sit down and talk. I don't think that's um, you know, a lot of money, but.
To a certain degree, that's kind of my job a little bit because I do phone Chris all the time to see how Chris is. What do you need? Wh- what, you know, and I do that with Michelle and I do that with other groups. Um, where they could say, hey, here's what we need and I can bring that forward. But I mean, I still think we need to have an economic development group. And I think we need to have all these people involved. What that looks like and how we make it work. Is I think something that we need to, so for from us, what are you looking for tonight?
Well, I had hoped that you would have reviewed these documents because you did get them a few weeks ago. And that we would prioritize where you wanted us to spend any additional time, right? Like, are there other things based on knowing that we're doing a housing study? A labor market study. Uh, the marketing, strategic marketing plan, and we'll be doing the placemaking work. Are there other places in this document that you want us like specifically focusing on the airport is and again, a whole other thing? Right? As its own, whereas saying we're gonna get a land inventory and a, they can building inventory. That's a bit of a broader thing, whereas if you need me to focus on the airport, that's a difference. I want some, I want some, which parts of the city, which parts of this plan I think are most important to you get accomplished in the next five years?
Well, I think the downtown is important. I mean, let's be honest, the airport is eight acres. We're not gonna be able to put a lot in there and there are very, there's a lot of restrictions to building on the airport. You've got to be, as you move from the center line forty-six meters over, you have to go up a, up a meter, up another meter and a half. So we're pretty restricted there. So I wouldn't want to see a lot of time and energy on the airport at this point in time because we're limited what we can do with it. Um, the Jedi situation was a good one and I'm glad we got the pamphlet out on it. The downtown has always been, when I was in council, the downtown has always been a suggestion. We talked about. Uh, taking the lane way behind uh Walk of Stars and Black's Pharmacy and doing like a um tr- uh trans, trans alley in Victoria. Better lighting, um um dumpsters gone. Uh, bringing people downtown, uh that kind of stuff. I think that's where I'd like to start focusing on. What we can do to bring the downtown to a comfortable place to be. Do we, do we screen off Spirit Square for a while? Do we do that? Uh, there, you know, we need cameras up, we need lighting up, we need the downtown to start. I mean, um, there's a new denture place in town, they're just appeared out of nowhere. Now I've gone in to meet them and everything, but I mean, again, businesses obviously want to come to Merritt. But we want them to feel comfortable and safe coming here and unwelcome. Yeah, so for me, the downtown. For me is one of the most important things to revitalize. We talk about it all the time. And, you know, I hate to say it, but it's like the sewer system in Colville. We always talk about it, we get the money already and we talk about it and all of a sudden, we don't do it. So uh we've talked about the downtown and I think every downtown, um, I mean, it's nice to have the up top. To drive people downtown, but your downtown is your heart, so always has been. Uh, when I moved here in seventy-seven, uh rodeo weekend was the biggest weekend and of course, the downtown mall was the best thing and I'm. Dan and and Adam can attest to that. That was the biggest time of the year. So I'd like to see that come back and there's been some some uh events that have changed how we do things in our community. So I'd kind of like to go back to the future a little bit, look at what we had, uh what we can move downtown. But another thing that. That some people seem to think that we have control over is the rental in these businesses by people who own them. We have no ability to control rent. On businesses. Now, that's not saying we can't suggest that they're a little off or whatever, but um I I would like to see the downtown. Um, done. I would like to see the um. The Jedi, uh our land inventory out there on what's available, that that will bring, to me, that will bring people to the community. Um, you know, we have somebody who's looking for two hundred acres. Well, we certainly don't have it, but one of these investors that we talked to or one of our developers does. So it'd be a good idea to pair them all up because no matter which way we look at this, we're in competition with every other community in B C. So if you're not gonna get up and running, you're gonna be left behind. It's that simple.
So with the downtown, I think we kind of talked about the opportunity to maybe focus a bit on Spirit Square as the starting point for downtown. Because it's sort of the anchor point.
Yep.
And it's could be, it could be gathering space and as we transition with the C P O building into something more versatile. Is that something council would like to see is is a bit of a focus for the first little while on. Funding, grant funding for Spirit Square and doing some exploration and design of how we might re- revitalize Spirit Square. We have, we have the Arts Council that's very on board on doing some community art installations in that area. Um, and then uh we could start applying, focusing on some grant funding for that. For designing, you know, something new with that building or revitalizing that building.
So we have a blank canvas now with the C P O building. Now we can decide what we want to do with that. I think it's important we decide correctly what we do with that. I C S has redone their building. They're now asking the Arts Council to do some art on the side of their building. They want to keep that garden going, so I think we talk with them on that. Um, I think, um, you know, we 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 make Spirit Square safe and fun to be at. Maybe we uh fence the entire bandshell off until it's needed. Uh, it's just things like this. I mean, um. You'll notice sometimes when we do end up with situations where we have too many people causing problems, we remove benches and tables and we remove them. And then once it wells, we put them back again. We've got to keep doing these kind of things. Uh, people are very happy to see the downtown bike lockups. Uh, as I've explained to Greg, electric bikes are becoming very popular. They're everywhere. I think what we've done with uh past councils and this council and councils to come with um active transportation paths. Will do nothing but benefit us as we move along. Um, we are starting to see more tourists that are gray coming to our community than they've ever been before because they have electric bikes. They want to be able to stop and have lunch, see sites, all of that kind of stuff. Maybe we started approaching businesses to put in small electric bike charges so they can, bikes can charge while they're sitting there, having their lunch. I would like to become something uh of a community where we're known, where you can get on our paths, have good food, see great murals.
So pedestrian, if I said pedestrian-friendly and we were looking, so just for the Colletville listeners. Uh, that's actually the multi-use path in Colletville is currently in the capital.
Yes, I get that.
For the next few years, F Y I, Colletville. Uh, so.
So.
Um, but that idea of being a pedestrian-friendly, whether that's a two-wheeled pedestrian or a on-foot pedestrian.
A walkabout, yeah.
Yeah, um, being a focus there.
Uh, I've talked enough. Uh, councillor, Shauny.
I I agree downtown has to be addressed, but I also have very cautious about. Um, spending money when it's tight before we have more industry and a tax base coming in. That's just my concern. Um, so so if we could somehow. Meld the two together at the same time, I think that would be a a perfect fit because, yes, downtown does need to be stepped up.
Well, I hate to prop your balloon, but the money situation is your problem. That's what budgets is for.
I know, I know.
And I do think like, I do think that searching out the grants is the way to go because obviously these are, these are. These are essential to the downtown and to the to the vibrancy of the community, but they're. They can be money-intensive and um. I think if we can search out the grants to do this work, ultimately, that's probably our. We might not have all the money to to implement a project, but at least we have the planning. We can get some planning money and some design money. So that council has a better idea about the costs of some of these things, right? Because right now, um, without doing some initial. Designs and getting some class C or class B estimates, we don't really know what the cost of some of this stuff is, right? And we're being creative, so. You know, we want sunshades in Spirit Square. Um, and so emergency management coordinator can apply on those three different grants, right?
Councillor, Councillor.
Yeah, I just wanted to say that I would like to uh um. Not make an opinion on what to do with Spirit Square until we hear from T N B, because they do have a building in that area, so.
Well, it's all part of it. Uh, the other thing that I would like to see, and it may sound odd, is I I think we need to start talking about uh an entry sign. Committee because our signs are rapidly aging to the point where one day they're gonna be fallen over.
Yeah.
So, and we need to have a new design of what our signs will look like. Uh, because these signs have been up a long time. Uh, and if you go have a look at the basis of them, which I did last week. Out of those four poles, right now, there's only one pole holding the one up coming down Hamilton Hill, and when that one goes, the whole thing's gonna go over. So I think we need to start, um, well, we should have started a while ago on a signage committee. And start talking about what the signs will look like as they come to the community.
So that's, that is ultimately part of the placemaking is what should those signs be, right? How do those signs represent the community as you're coming in? So that's part of the. The funding that we have. We have a good amount of funding for that placemaking project, probably enough to start implementing some of the actual. Uh, particularly signage type, type work, or getting some um, maybe some designs done for those things. Uh, with the funding that we have available for that. So, yes, modernizing those entrance signs. And but knowing what they should look like to represent, best represent the community.
Councillor.
So economic development take times and it's not something that is gonna happen in the next twelve months. So if we decide to go in-house or, you know, hiring a consultant. It's important to do that assessment. So I would be concerned to just start working on downtown without assessing eh other priorities. So I, there are more than one need in the community and we have to determine which one is priority number one. So um I have said that before, so in the only way that we are going to bring the property taxes down is by increasing this. This business tax revenue. And that's when we have to determine the. The industries that we want to attract here. So um when we do the, when we hire a consultant, so. They need to do the assessment based on location, based on resources, based based on industry, they have to understand the community of, the needs of this community specifically. And then we can, we decide what's gonna happen after that. If a consultant is out of the question, then. We need to uh work together with different stakeholders to be able to determine those needs. We can have a facilitator, let's say, always from H C B C. Uh, Kevin Poole that we hired, Kevin Poole one time. I'm not sure if we hired or he delivered this presentation uh for us. He was the economic development for Vernon and he is still works for Vernon, different um position though. So we can hire somebody like that person or Jim Sterling from Venture Camlub. So. These people that can help us, you know, guide if we want to deliver it in-house and determine those specific. Uh, short-term goals that we need to work on before spending any money. So right now, we don't have an economic development officer, so. We can allocate some of that money that we are saving for those wages to be able to pay that. How much are we talking about the consultation? I don't know. Is that out of the question? I don't know, but I think it's worth exploring those options.
Well, the other thing that I think we also should be talking about is what kind of industry do we want here? Do we want heavy industry? And if we do, where does that go? Do we want just to stay with light industry? I mean, we have to be very aware of the 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 variable winds that blow from north to south. Class schools and people that are downtown. So I think we have to be careful of what we are looking for. You don't want to turn away certain businesses, but some businesses just will not match with us. So I think that's one thing that council has to decide and maybe the economic group has to decide is what works best for this community. And the growth of this community, so um. Uh, I know that we have been presented with things like cow rendering, battery rendering, tire rendering. Um, not really a hundred percent sure those are things that we're looking for in the community, but maybe there's a spot for those because you certainly don't want to exclude. Heavy industry if it's a able to be done correctly in a spot that was not gonna be a problem. So I think that's something that council should be aware of. Is what, uh, you know, if we, where we stick on this.
I was just gonna add that, especially if we already have people that have lost jobs in other areas that could do those jobs. And keep them here.
Anyone else? Well, I think we have kind of agreed that we'd like to see the the downtown revitalization start. I think we have agreed that we would like to see the Spirit Square worked on along with the C P O building. I know councillor Ogan has some issues with that, but I mean, we have to start somewhere. Uh, like he said, it's not gonna be done in twelve months. Uh, then we can have some um professional start to guide us along the way as we move along. Um, I think that's a good place to start. I think as we review this document more, we can talk about it. Not saying the airport's out of the question. But I don't think the airport is going to really give us a lot of anything that we're really looking for.
But I also think that economic diversification and growth is really important.
Of course.
Yeah, so that has to be key when you're thinking about the downtown revitalization, because that's all tax dollars.
Yep. Councillor.
So and what about business retention? So with all these changes happening outside, there are gonna be so many businesses affected. So I was working with different organizations or businesses in town that uh they were lacking of people. They have, they didn't have the manpower. Now they are unable to do it because of all the changes to immigration into us on November first. Now with all these tariffs, it's gonna be difficult. So what are we doing as a council to help our business community? That should be also a priority.
So that's one of the sets of questions that the the labor market study is going to be addressing is what are people actually? Like, are they just not getting any applicants? Are they getting applicants who are woefully unqualified? Are they getting applicants who think that they should be making a hundred thousand dollars a year for a sixty thousand dollar a year job? Like. We have to understand this current, like, that what is happening with employment at this stage, right? Like, what is the barrier? Because there, we have, we have one of the highest unemployment rates. In the province. In fact, I think we actually are the highest unemployment rate in the province. Um, we have the lowest educational levels in comparison to the other communities. Um, in regards to high school graduates and post-secondary education um in the, in the province. Um. But what kind of people are on, what kind of people are not working? What kind of jobs are people advertising that nobody's applying on or that people are applying on but expecting? Some other kind of work environment than what they're working in, right? Like. You should have different expectations if you're working in a lawyer's office versus if you're working in the tire shop. What are the? You know, I I don't know, like, I don't, you know, are people coming in expecting something like I. You know, are people coming in expecting something like I graduated from high school, I'm gonna, I'm gonna run a business kind of situation? I don't know. And I think that's where we have to kind of figure out where those gaps are because there are jobs, but we still have the highest unemployment rate. Why, why is that?
I think it's due to COVID. I'm sorry, the federal government created a bunch of lazy people. They did. I'm sorry, but they did. And I'm telling you, I have a business and you know what? Right now, I mean, I could use uh. Good people, but they're not coming through. I might get an application a month. And that's ridiculous because people can make good money in the hospitality industry, way more than what COVID gave them. And I'm not sure what it's like in the other industries, but I kind of got a feeling, you know, everybody's in the same boat. Where are the people? Where are they? What happened to them?
Yeah.
No, well, okay, you do have a lot of people retiring. Um, but you have a lot of people, the the X, Y, Z millennial, whatever you want to call them, the Gen Xers or whatever. They just don't want to work. They don't necessarily go out unless it's eleven or twelve o'clock. Yes, they sleep all day and they're on their computers, they're on their games. And yeah, maybe we created a little bit of that as parents. I'm, I'm, I'm bad for that, but um, on the other hand, I mean, I set a good example. As a, as a parent for somebody with a good work ethic, and I know a lot of my friends and my, my, my son's friends' parents all set good, good examples. And they don't want to work.
So this is all your fault.
It's not my fault, Tim. It's not my fault.
Our, our children, our children, I mean, and it's not just that generation, right? There are people who are Gen X people who, and I'm a Gen X, right? My Gen X, fifty, that's Gen X, right? Okay, Gen X, right, who have a strong work ethic and some people who don't. And there are kids who are being taught to have a good work ethic, but there's also this thing where you're going to become an internet person and make. A million dollars a year doing something on TikTok, which is that a real job? Like, I don't understand that. There's no contribution to society.
No, you're right. So.
So that is the stuff that we need to dig, dig, dig into and we're getting that research done and trying to get a hold of different stats around that because it is so confusing.
So we already know we have a housing strategy happening, right?
Yeah.
So we don't need to work on that one. Um, I'm not saying that we shouldn't be working on something up at the airport, but I I I I I don't think that's priority. I don't know about you guys. I just don't know if the airport's priority.
Industry.
Councillor Ogan.
Yeah.
I think I am on the same page with you. So um, there are five different key priorities that this document identified. But we have mentioned um, for the most part, the first three, I think that we should be focusing on on those three. Would that be achievable? I mean, C A O.
I think in five years, I think we will have some significant progress on those. Like, as you said. Economic development and that's, that's kind of like, people say, we hire somebody to do economic development, how come there's not more businesses in town? Because economic development is a long game, right? Getting somebody to move their business to a new community has a lot of factors involved in it, right? Is there housing? Are there people they can employ? Do they have the right skills? Am I going to have to train people? Do I have close proximity to my market? Do I have, uh, you know, what's the price of gas? What's the price of fuel? What's the internet status? What's the power status? All of those things are factors that impact whether or not somebody's going to move an industry here, cost of land, right? We have a lot of those really positive things. We just need to be able to sell them and we need to connect to the right people to sell them to. Um, and I think that we can have a good strategy and start to implement that strategy in the next three to five years. While alongside doing some downtown development and and bringing back the vibrancy in the downtown. The downtown needs a little facelift. There are many parts of it that are belong to us as a municipal government that need a facelift. However, much of that work is probably going to have to be grant funded because it's not necessarily the core infrastructure. That, you know, water and sewer.
Well, one of the other things that we have to realize is, like you said, there are things that we don't know, we don't know.
Mm-hmm.
Like, we're talking about a a group that's about possibly ready to invest, that is going to produce a byproduct. That could bring something in that we have never planned on. But if that byproduct product could be used to bring that group here. And we may see that with other groups. When they are manufacturing something, something is a product that they're creating that could now. Ha, ha, bring another business that we've never talked about before. So that's what we're talking about is we're going to end up with some of these. Where we think we're going in a certain direction and all of a sudden another group comes in and all of a sudden a byproduct is being made that can foster. Now we go after that. Are you, how about you come here because we've got all of this and you can have it for free?
Yeah, I have some evil plans.
Oh, well, you gotta do this. That's the one million dollars. Uh, councillor Egan.
Now I forgot what I was gonna say.
Excellent. Moving on. Yep.
Because we don't want to make decisions, you know, right? And again, but we don't need to be able to want.
Your relation mic's not on, right?
My mic's always on. You did that.
Sorry.
Um, yeah, so, sorry, I'll come. I think. We have the potential to get a great deal of this work done in the next five years, whether we do it as a employee or we consult with somebody and bring in a contractor. Either way, we have to, we're going to have a plan by the end of twenty twenty-five. And we're going to be able to initiate that plan in a meaningful way with, you know, some specific outcomes that we're going to be looking for.
Yeah. And you know what? If if we're going to work on these three priorities, then then let's not, let's not ma- make it become air. Let's work on these. We we'd like to see updates.
Exactly.
We'd like to see where we're going, how far we are. I mean, we do this in budget every year. So I I would like to see as we move forward, so you know, we can have goals that we can attain to.
Yeah.
Councillor Egan.
I thought I turned it off. I just said it should be goal oriented, so we see results.
Are you uh, are you ki- happy with this?
Uh, yes.
Is council happy with that direction?
Quite honestly, this is too much. It's a bit overwhelming.
Oh, well.
You know?
Okay, well, ha- have it done by next week. Uh, moving on, moving on to our people out in the crowd here. Tourism Nicola Valley Direct Marketing Organization Discussion. Darcy, you're up. I guess you push that button. Yeah, there you go.
And not, not you, I'm pushing you. We'll try. I. Mayor and council, thank you very much for uh providing this opportunity for Tourism Nicola Valley to come in and and do this presentation. I was asked to introduce the people that are going to be presenting. Uh, my name's Darcy MacLeod. I think most of you know me. Uh, we've all met before. Uh, you're going to see a couple of presentations, but first I want to say we're, we're segueing into an industry that is one that has potential. For tremendous growth for merit in the area and has shown a a lot of potential and has grown considerably over the past several years. Uh, the people that are going to be presenting to you tonight. Felt it was important that we provide some background on who they are because you don't all, you might know them, you might recognize them. But you don't really know where they came from, what they've done and how involved they've been in a lot of important things that have happened in this community in the past. Uh, Mr. Mayor, you may have a lot of background because you've been involved for a long time as well. Uh, but I think it's important that everybody kind of has that, you know, uh, ground understanding of the quality of people. That you're dealing with with this organization. Uh, I'm going to start out with Amber Papo. Uh, Amber's worked across multiple sectors, including education, economic development, technology, real estate and human resource development. She holds a Bachelor of Education, an M B, M B A in Global Leadership. And an I C D dot D designation, which is a designation held by uh professional corporate directors. She's also a licensed Realtor. She brings a a strategic and multifaceted approach to her work. As an executive leader, she has spearheaded one of Canada's largest remote or digital organizations, including one of B C's largest online schools. Making her a recognized expert in education, technology and digital transformation. She also serves an advisor to technology companies, most recently in artificial intelligence. Helping drive innovation in emergency, emerging industries. Amber has lived and worked in merit for a long time since nineteen ninety-three. Raising her daughter here while collaborating with the city and local organizations to secure millions of dollars in tourism and community project grants since two thousand and five. Uh, she recently opened a new real estate business in merit. Uh, driven by her love for the community and her belief in its growth and potential, she's always happy to share expertise. Expertise and experience and support merit wherever she can. And that's why she's here tonight. She's a a volunteer uh helping T N V. With uh, with not only this presentation, but their strategy moving forward. Uh. Somebody that you all will recognize, Greg Gerard. Greg's an award-winning Canadian travel blogger, public speaker and tourism consultant specializing in community-driven marketing and digital tourism strategies. As the co-founder of A Canada Travel dot com, Canada's largest privately operated adventure travel website. Greg has spent over twenty years shaping tourism promotion across the country, along with his brother who is also here. Um, his expertise has earned him numerous accolades, collaborations with global tourism leader, leaders and recognition as a top Canadian travel influencer. Since taking on a contract with uh Tourism Nicola Valley in twenty eighteen, Greg has been the driving force behind local tourism growth. He spearheaded the award-winning Experience Merit and Experience Nicola Valley uh digital marketing platforms, which you all know about. Uh, showcasing the region's attractions to a broader audience, audience. His efforts have helped secure millions of dollars in funding to build and enhance local tourism assets. Boosting the region's economic development, which is one of the topics you talked about earlier. Simply put, Greg is a merit champion who continues to make a lasting impact on the community and Canada. And he's very passionate. Anybody who's seen Greg speak about anything uh knows that he's passionate when he speaks. Uh, the other person I want to introduce who's not going to be uh presenting tonight, but will be available to answer questions at the end is Melvina White. Melvina is a seasoned entrepreneur, entrepreneur and hospitality expert with over thirty-five years' experience in the tourism and business sectors. From managing pubs and hotels to owning and operating successful nightclubs and landmark businesses like the Pemberton Hotel and the Merit Desert Inn. She's played a key role in shaping the hospitality and tourism industry in multiple communities in B C. Her dedication to business, tourism and event promotion has earned her widespread respect, including an induction into the Canadian Country Music Hall of Fame. For her decades-long involvement in the music industry. Melvina was instrumental in forming the Hotel and Motel Association in Merit in two thousand and five, which later evolved into Tourism Nicola Valley in two thousand and twelve. As a driving force behind securing millions of dollars for projects and events that have enhanced merit's tourism sector. She's played a vital role in strengthening the region's economy and visitor experience. Today, as the president of Tourism Nicola Valley, she continues to be a passionate advocate for tourism, business development and promoting merit as a must-visit destination. Those are going to be your uh key people that we're going to be talking about tonight. First up, we're going to start with Amber Papo.
Mayor and council, it's tough. I haven't met everybody, but nice to meet you or see you at least. Um, uh, is, are people turning? Oh, okay. So, um, slide. Oh, slide, okay. I'm used to having a little button. Um, so as Darcy introduced me before, I have to wear glasses to see and take them off to see you. Um. I've been working in merit and living in merit for a long time. It's actually nineteen ninety I moved here. I had a little nineteen ninety Jeep. That's how I remember. Um, but since two thousand and two, basically, two thousand and three, I started working with a group that eventually became the Merit Walk of Stars. And I've been a passionate advocate of growing the city, especially in the tourism and economic development. So having that conversation that you had before, I really appreciate it. Tonight is probably the tenth time, maybe the twelfth time I presented to various iterations of council. So I appreciate the time that you're taking to actually hear about Tourism Nicola Valley. I wanted to start with a really interesting quote. I I love starting anything with quotes. Albert Einstein's one of my favorite. He's got a whole slew of them. But the tonight's quote I wanted to start with, and it it does have application for what I'm going to talk about tonight, is. Pure mathematics is, in its way, the poetry of logical ideas. So I'll let you think about that for a second and next slide, please. So how does that apply for tourism? Well, this is a, this is an equation I've used and seen and witnessed successfully done. Over and over again, not just in tourism, but I'm going to apply it to tourism tonight here in merit, but in businesses and not-for-profit organizations, even in families. And relationship building. And that is consistency plus community plus collaboration equals success. And why it does that, and I I actually added one of my notes here so you could see it is. It provides a clear framework for achieving sustainable tourism growth. So it applies to merit. When all three elements or variables are present, tourism flourishes. And the results speak for themselves. I've actually seen this equation applied to merit and been successful. And I'm going to share that with you in the next slide. Well, not quite, in the slides that are coming. So I'm just going to explain what those. Variables in that equation mean. In regards to how it applies for tourism. But again, it can, it can be transferred into all sorts of different organizations or different projects or different business applications, and that is consistency. It's ensuring that a vision doesn't change with with shifting leadership, administration or government transitions. With community, it's encouraging buy-in and participation from residences, businesses and organizations, but even more so. Is a shared memory, is a, is a memory that the community remembers and that it's transferred time over time. And I'll explain that a bit more. And collaboration, leaders, businesses, different community partners, government are working together in trusted partnerships. Slide, I don't know what to say. Slide next. So when I saw this equation or when I was actually part of this equa- I don't think I was part of the equation, but I was part of watching this equation unfold. And many of people behind me were in and part of that twenty years ago as um Mayor Getz was part of that in in certain iterations. Is how did it work between twenty two thousand and three and and twenty eleven? In terms of consistency, community partners had a clear and common vision for transforming merit into a tourism hub. This vision remains stable. It remains stable over the years regardless of changes in the partnerships that happened. Regardless of changes in administration in the city and regardless of government changes, and that is municipal, provincial or federal. In terms of community, we had organizations, volunteers and business owners all work together towards that shared vision or that shared goal. And there was open communication between all of them that ensured that everyone was heard and involved. And then in terms of, terms of collaboration, the municipal government and community leaders work together in a trusted partnership. So when you're talking about economic roundtables, there was active economic roundtables during that time that were making. Incredible strides in regards to developing downtown, in downtown businesses, economic development, all those things were happening. And a big part of that, when we talk about funding, and I'll get to that in just a second, is that resources were pooled. There was active collaboration in terms of pooling resources. So. I'll give you an example, and Spirit Square is actually a perfect example when I get to it, but that pooling was volunteer. And it was a collaborative pooling of resources, time and money. So when that equation was applied between two thousand and three and twenty eleven, here are just a few of the things, not all of them. But we captured the attention of the highest levels of government, both provincially and federally. I actually had meetings with our mayor at the time, David Laird, the premier of the province, our M P and a whole slew of other ministers. Provincial ministers, not from merit, that gathered around a ra- a roundtable in merit to talk about the future of merit. Our tourism, our downtown, our economic development, and they were all in. The initiatives attracted the um respect of the North American music industry. And and it went from having conversations with the biggest uh music representatives at the time, not just the musicians, but their representatives. They bought into it. We built a strong partnership with organizations, not just here in merit. But all over the, all over the province and across the country, including we had a very close relationship with our indigenous groups here in merit. We ran for those that weren't there or here at the time, we ran a very successful um indigenous at the time. Um, program, unemployment program for young people for eight years. It was very successful. And during that. And during that time, we collaborated and created resources for those individuals with our partnerships with the indigenous groups. So indigenous groups, including the N T A, Coldwater Indian Band, Upper Nigella Indian Band, we collaborated on grants. And we, we built amazing things with those folks. We brought thousands of visitors into merit and many of them who still continue today, the murals, all sorts of things. And we secured millions of dollars of grant and donation funding, and a lot of that was leveraged. I sat up in City Hall with a variety of different folks who were working at the time, writing grants. The improvements to the Vote Street Bridge, those were collaborative. And by that, I mean the groups that already had grant money collaborated with the city who had money, and we actually expanded the money. Rich Coleman, at the time, who was, I think he was Minister of Highways, we got funding to create a lot of the trails and the walking trails. And he actually asked us, can you get, can you get more money? Can you, can you figure out how you could, because we have more money to give you. At the time, we we didn't have it. Spirit Square, for those that weren't here for collective memory, that was um David Laird and I sat down. David was the mayor at the time. And we talked about what could you do with this empty tar parking lot? And at the time, actually, the reason why it's called the Spirit Square is because we weren't that original. It was a Spirit Square grant. And uh we just didn't, we got lazy about naming it. We should have named it. We didn't. But the Spirit Square Grant was a collaborative grant between the City of Merit and the Walk of Stars. We leveraged, I don't know, I I can't recall the numbers, but we leveraged about five hundred thousand dollars between the city and five hundred thousand dollars between the Walk of Stars, including a whole bunch of volunteers that came and explained how we were going to dig up that property that was actually full of asbestos. Someone along the line threw asbestos in that hole and then covered up with tar. So the Spirit Square was built by the community in a collaborative space with all parties involved. We also created long-term value for the community. Uh, it still is growing. It still, it still continues to go. That that leveraging and that collaboration and that community still continues. Um, it's impacted everything that we've, we've done, even though it has slowed down. So this is an interesting um slide because I actually thought it had got taken out, so I I'm just going to speak to this. So tourism growth is something that's really important, but I just wanted to just to note that why twenty eleven, why did I end it there? Um, for those that haven't had the opportunity to read the tourism plan from twenty thirteen, I suggest that you do as a counselor. It's a, it's interesting because one, it's things we're already talking about now, but you'll also see some recommendations from T O D A at the time. T O D A had quotes that specifically said that after twenty eleven that one of the things the City of Merit needs to do, not the, not municipal government, but the city needs to do is work together. Whatever happened, and we can let bygones be bygones between twenty eleven and twenty thirteen, we stopped getting that support. That equation that we had broke down. And I'm going to come back and talk about what I feel is a solution. But in between that, there's been groups, including Tourism Nicola Valley, which, as Darcy has had said, had started out as the Hotel and Motel Association way back when and evolved into Tourism Nicola Valley, and they've had grand successes despite some struggles. And Greg's going to talk about um the successes, so you get a picture of where we are now and and maybe a little bit of the struggles, and I'll come back and talk about some solutions.
Well, thank you for being back.
Good to see you, Greg.
Uh, first of all, I'd like to say thank you to you, Mayor Getz, counselors and staff for your time and consideration. I'd also like to thank the people who have come today to support Tourism Nicola Valley. Thank you very much for spending the time and making the efforts to come here tonight. Success is never final. Failure is never fatal. It is the courage to continue that counts, and that comes from Winston Churchill. That is something that we are trying to do as a city, as a tourism organization and as a nonprofits within our community. Knowing and understanding recent tourism successes in the Nickel Valley helps build on effective strategies. They attract future investments and create sustainable growth by leveraging proven adventures and experiences. But before we can even get there, it's important to understand what the role of a D M O is. What does it even mean as a D M O? A D M O is a destination marketing organization. It is an organization responsible for promoting a specific location such as a city, a region or country, and promoting it as a travel destination. But in essence, what does a D M O do? It does marketing and promotion, showcases the destination through advertising, social media and campaigns. A D M O is responsible for visitor information, provides resources like maps, guides, websites, brochures, apps for the traveler and for locals to enjoy what we have here to offer. Support local businesses, helps tourism-related businesses and the domino effect of non-tourism-related businesses. It helps them all grow by driving a new economy to their cash registers, because that's what tourism is. It's new money. It's not recycling local money. It's not going for grants. It's taking new money from outside sources and putting it into our stores, getting our stores to grow, getting our stores to be better at servicing the locals. It also is responsible for event and conference attractions. Works to bring festivals, on the phone to bring new festivals, which we are currently working on right now. Sporting events, conventions to the area. And it may not come as a surprise to many of you, but a D M O and tourism is a big part of economic development. Encourage tourism to boost local economies. So we are gathered here today to start discussions. We are gathered here to talk about tourism, maybe get a better understanding of tourism, the benefits of tourism, what makes tourism click, what makes tourism grow. T V in the city to grow tourism. But more importantly, we want to grow merit. And that's what we have to keep in our sights is that we're here, all of us are here, not for the city, not for T and V, not for some of the groups behind us, but bottom line, we're all here to make Barrett a better place to live, work and play. And we got to figure out a way that we can do that all together as one. I'm going to give you a little bit of some formulas here, just to give you an idea. For every one dollar spent on tourism marketing, the return is ten to twenty dollars on a visitor spending. For example, if I spent ten thousand dollars on tourism marketing, that will generate a hundred thousand dollars in visitor spending. Now, if I take every dollar of that visitor spending, the community will benefit one point six dollars for every dollar spent by a tourist. So if we go back to our formula, travelers spend a hundred thousand, it generates a hundred and sixty thousand in the community for small businesses, and that all comes from ten thousand dollars of marketing. When you do marketing effectively, you know your target markets, you know where your travelers are coming from, you could stretch dollars to even more. Some communities have proven that ten thousand dollars in marketing will get you twenty dollars for every dollar spent. And Revelstoke is a good example of that. When you support a small business, you're not only supporting the community, but you're also supporting a family. You're also supporting somebody who is raising children here to work here, to play here, to enjoy our amenities, to help us build this community to a better spot. Tourism is not just about travelers. Tourism is about lifestyle for all of us who live here by making it better, by making it funner, by making it a place to stay. It is important that we understand the impacts that tourism when working together. There are five ways tourism builds community prosperity, and you can see them up on the screen there. Number one is economic growth and investment. Tourism brings in new money, supporting local businesses. Money that is dropped into our community stays in our community while the visitor goes back home, leaving their hard-earned dollars in our community so it can be recycled through our stores, so we can generate one point six dollars for every dollar. Job creation and business expansion. Tourism improves our physical assets, which in turn attracts employment in hospitality, retail, recreation and investment. People move to areas that they want to live, that they have their passions are facilitated in that community. If you're a mountain biker, merit has that. You might want to move here because your family mountain bikes. If you're a fisherman, merit has that. You might want to move here because you like to go fishing. A lot of us, when we choose a place to move to, we look at the surrounding physical assets. My brother and I are a great example of that. We're very, very much remote workers. But when we first came to merit, we fell in love with your backcountry. We wilderness camped at four or five of your lakes when we researched here. We went fishing. We couldn't believe the fish we were catching. We went mountain biking on trails that used to have no signs. It didn't matter. We got canoeing. It didn't matter what lake we were on. We were enthralled with scenery. So what brought us to merit was exactly what a traveler will come to see when we're in merit. More tourism encourages new business startups to serve travelers. When we build a tourism industry, and again, I'm going to refer to Revelstoke, which I did live in for five years, my brother and I, we learned a lot from Revelstoke. If you look at Revelstoke, when they started out in nineteen ninety-five, when they first started their tourism association, they had nothing. Zippo for tourism. But what happened was they started developing a mountain bike system. Then they started developing their snowmobile system. All of a sudden, they have now three different snowmobile rental places. Now, all of a sudden, they have mountain bike shops. They have mountain bike tour guides. They have fishing guides. This all comes after they develop the physical asset, which then they develop the need and the marketing for them to come here. Three, community appeal attracts families. I don't know of any families within my sphere of influence that is living where they are because their kids have nothing to do. They go and live where they are because their kids are involved in swimming, hockey, gymnastic, dance, uh fishing, mountain biking club. There's a lot of new initiatives out there, and that's why families will move to an area because of that community, small-town charm and because of people. People is tourism. You are tourism. I am tourism. You are the marketing tool that promotes merit. When you're out in that public, you are the sales tool. What you say has a big bearing on how merit grows. Every one of us in this room is a marketing tool when we're out there talking to people. We need to enforce that within the community. We need to let our locals know that when they're out there, they need to sell what we have. They need to be proud of where they live, work or play. You should be proud where you live, work or play, because then there's a problem if you're not. Tourism is the same way. Regional recognition, campaigns promoting adventure, tourism helps attract not just visitors but remote workers, entrepreneurs, investors. Revelstoke, again, and I'll use them, they have one of the largest remote worker population in British Columbia. That is because they built a mountain biking system from nothing, a snowmobile system from nothing. And then because they built their physical assets, their two primary signature destinations, a mount, a big ski mountain decides I'm going to go put up in Revelstoke. That wasn't by accident. That wasn't a fluke. That was building tourism in steps. That was going from nothing, a dirt trail, to a world-class snowmobile destination, a world-class mountain biking destination. It only took them thirty years. That's all to get to where they are. Five, sustainable development diversification. A strong tourism sector reduces reliance on traditional industries. It actually complements traditional industries. Because if you're coming here and you've developed a tourism physical assets, then you're going to have people out there that are moving here, which are then going to be working within our plants, which we have coming. We have a big economic development push that are coming, and tourism has a direct relation to economic development. We are asking the city to invest in the Nickel Valley through tourism. So we can help attract investment and to create a new money in our stores, a new economy. We don't have a tourism economy. But we could. So bottom line, tourism development of assets is one of the pillars to attracting investment, families and businesses, the quality of tourism assets such as a powerful economic driver and community builder. So as you know, recently I was in the Kamloops Hospital for a month for major surgery. It surprised me as much as anybody else. But while I was in my hospital bed for a month, I had a guy next to me, eighty years old, named Buddy. He was from Revelstoke. And we were talking. And he says, I was telling him about our wonderful doctors and nurses here. Because we do have wonderful doctors and nurses here. We have wonderful ambulance drivers here. I know. Because I just dealt with a whole bunch of them when I was in merit. I know what it's like to go from merit to Kamloops in an ambulance. And guess what? They did a hell of a job. It's not our nurses, our doctors, our ambulances, it's the system. We have great nurses, great doctors. And while I was bragging up our merit hospital system, the cat next to me says, huh, in Revelstoke, we have so many doctors, we can't take anymore. We have a walk-in clinic. We have never closed for one day. And I says, well, why is that, buddy? Why is Revelstoke having population eighty-two hundred people? Why are they having an abundance of doctors, nurses and ambulance workers? And a whole bunch of other communities do not. And he said, it's very simple. They're moving to Revelstoke because since nineteen ninety-five, we have built a tourism lifestyle that the doctors want to live in. They want to go skiing. They want to go hiking. They want to go fishing. They want to have their kids grow up on the slopes, snowmobiling. They're all there because of tourism did their job starting in nineteen ninety-five. Which brings me to the answer of why. We know merit is a great place. We all know it, or we wouldn't even be here. We all know merit's a great place to live, to work and play. But what we don't do very well is let others know merit is a great place. We have had many years of attempts of trying to tell everybody it's a great place. We haven't done very well at it, but that's about to change. Page, yep. Research tells us that building, this is going to be very interesting, and I I when it was brought up about how long it was going to take to get your economic strategy in place, let me, let me share with you a little bit about how long it takes to get tourism to a high level. Research tells that building a tourism industry in a small town, not an urban center, because urban centers does not apply, urban centers have money, they have funding, they have tons of tax base to draw from. But in a small town, to build a tourism industry is a hell of a job. Because you have everything working against you, staff, skills, funding, time, all the things that small towns have to deal with day in and day out. Urban centers don't have that. But in a small town, it will take anywhere from ten to twenty years to build a high-level tourism industry. And everyone's going, wow, that's a long time. It is a long time. Because to build the industry, you got to do a lot of things first. And that's where we're talking about our stages here. Stage one. Stage one, building, fixing, enhancing the foundation to build a tourism industry. So first is you identify and develop key attractions, your national sites, your physical inventory, your historical sites, your experiences. Identify them and build them to a level of excellence. Two, improve infrastructure, roads, accommodation, wayfinder signing. All of these things include visitor centers, include them, make them top-notch, people will come and they'll use them and they'll also go back home and they'll start bragging about merit. We need to make our travelers our best marketing tool. We're not doing that. We need to make our travelers go back to Germany, Alberta, Kelowna and talk about merit. But we got to make it an exceptional experience for them to do that. Engage local businesses and stakeholders is step one. Create partnerships with tourism and adventure groups is step one. Everything in step one, Tourism Nickel Valley is currently there in step one. We're in step one, one to five years. We've been doing this maybe two to three years full bore, so we are in step one. Step two, growth and recognition. Gain recognition through word Gain recognition through word of mouth, media exposure, digital marketing, print marketing, trade shows, apps, online contests, everything we can do, media exposures, media partners, all of that is step two. When you have the physical assets in a place that's a high level, and thank you to the work of Jordan and of course Travis and of course Simon, who each are representing the mountain bike and the snowmobile club, and we've had the privilege of work with. And then there's Nickel Valley rodeo. We've had the privilege of work with them, doing a fantastic job. But you have to build your inventory assets to a level of high level. So you get return visits, you get referrals, you get people spending, our average stay in Merit is barely one night. Barely. To having a successful industry, you need an average of two to three nights. We're barely breaking one. So how do you get them to stay to two to three nights? You work with restaurants, you work with accommodations, you work with snowmobile clubs, mountain biking clubs, rodeo clubs. You work with these groups to establish enough attraction that they expand their stay. How do you do that? Education. If you do not educate the traveler, they don't have the information to make it a two or three night stay. Attract outside investments and funding for further development. Revelstoke built up their marketing, they built up their basic signature assets, snowmobiling and mountain biking. All of a sudden, somebody comes, a developer knocks on the door, I want to develop Revelstoke Mountain and build it into a ski resort. Attend trade shows. Ever since I've been here, I don't think we've been to one trade show. I think five years prior, I'm going here, I hear we haven't been to one trade show. So how do we make connections? How do we sell merit if we're not actually talking to the actual people who make those decisions? Step three, ten to twenty years. Once you get into this format, become a well-known regional or national destination. We all know them in B C because they get all the money, Taffino, Victoria, Kelowna, even Kamloops, Vancouver, Whistler. We all know them because that's the only ads we get to see on TV. I don't see an ad about merit, don't see an ad about Ashcroft, don't see an ad about Prince George. But the majority of British Columbia is made up of small towns. Yet we're getting less than five percent of the exposure. That has to change. How do you change that? You change that by talking to the stakeholders, the decision-makers, and you tell them and you explain to them, this is what they have. Because a lot of people do not have a clue what our small towns have. Establish tourism as a key economic driver, innovate, expand offerings to adapt to trends. Since I've been here, there have been so many changes in trends, it's unbelievable. AI is coming on strong. That's going to be a trend. We've got uh more social media influence and more, more social media influence on where you go and what you go. Social media is becoming a game changer. Ensure sustainable tourism, practice to protect local environment and culture. We should be proud of our culture. We don't throw it out the window, start over. That never works. Culture is one spoke in our wheel. We build off culture. We build off history. We build off, and I know some of you don't agree with this, we build off country music. We don't just drop it. You expand it. Country mountain biking, country snowmobiling, play with it, use the taglines, make it a big deal. A small town with strong city support, adequate funding, good communication channels, consistent messaging, strategic planning. And if all of these elements are put in line and they connect, we could have a very, very successful tourism industry, not in twenty years, but in ten. We can accelerate that process, but you can't accelerate a process when you don't have all the pillars in place to hold it up. How long before we take tourism seriously? Seriously. We have everything here to bring a lot of money in. We could seriously help our nonprofits. We could seriously help our stores. We could seriously help with downtown revitalization. One group ain't going to do it. Every group is going to do it. Every counselor is going to do it. This is not a one-man show. This is a team. That's what community belongs to, is a team. Next slide, please. Success is a journey and not a destination. Tourism in a small town isn't built in a day. It is built on the hearts and minds of its people. The people are the ones that either buy in or don't. You don't get the buy-in, you don't have the support, you don't have the growth. And that comes from all levels, from the person on the lowest level of management to a store owner, to the mayor of Merit, to T and V, to the MLA, to, to our MPs, everyone. Tourism Nickel Valley has taken many big steps in the development of tourism in, in the last two years since the DMO designation. They have made big strides with funding assistance from many sources, mostly from grants. T and V has received, T and V has generated one point eight million dollars in this community to build their physical assets. That's from a group, not of paid employees, no CEO. That's from a vol, group of volunteers who all have other jobs, who all have other families, who has families. And they've generated one point eight mil. Now let's add inclined into that. Now we're looking at two point six million. That was done out of our meetings, that was done out of searching down grants, that was done writing grants, that was done with a lot of talking and a lot of partnership making. Overall, in this chart is a list of the many sectors of tourism we have improved since two thousand and twenty-three. In two years, we have revamped dirt trails into a world-class mountain biking destination. Everyday sign, we have staging areas with brand-new maps, backcountry mapbooks, which we negotiated with. We have apps, we have a new website, we have staging areas with bike repairs, little things that you can repair your bike on site. We have three staging areas, we have a mountain bike map that's actually up to date. As a previous one, fifty percent of the trails were inactive. We could have got sued majorly. Somebody hurt themselves on one of those trails, we'd be in trouble. We went and supported two new certified guides. We sent them to a mountain bike guide in camp. We're setting up our tours, we're setting up our guides because the first thing we did was step one. Focus on improving their physical assets to a level that is respectable, to a level that will attract our target market. In one year, we brought back three mountain biking, three mountain biking events. We have another mountain biking event coming, but I'm going to let Jordan talk about that when he's ready. On our last mountain biking, which was uh, well, the trails went and then the cow, what's, what, three, what are the two we got right now? The two events. Yeah? That's it, cold water. Then we have a third one, which is coming because of the response we got from Trails and Tales, which is the one that does the mountain biking. They are now bringing another event. That's because our trails are world-class. We have new ramps, new jumps, new beams, new corners. It is one, if you like mountain biking, go and check it out. If you don't like mi, mountain biking, go and walk them when it's not in season and see the work that they put into it. Because it is world-class. Then you look at Snowmobile Club. Simon Rosardo. We had the pleasure of working with them. Simon's a great partner, great ideas, hard worker. He wants everything to be the best for snowmobiling. At that time, we met with Simon, he was frustrated. We sat down and we worked out a plan. Snowmobile Club was on the verge of having some serious issues because they were on the verge of having all their snow groomers collapse, break down, we'd have no grooming, no grooming, no snowmobiling. We're ranked top five as a snowmobile destination in B C, the Coochahila. Are we capitalizing on it? No. Should we? Yes. Money into the community. There's a way to bring in two to three average days. They got new radios, new GPSs, new fuel tanks, and this spring, we're going to tidy up every single snowmobile staging area with signs, information, emergency phone numbers. And I'm sure Simon's got ten other things he wants to stick on things because he always puts more than I could put on our signs. But good for Simon. Cross-country ski club, ski club, not glee club, ski club. With them, we worked on trail upgrades. We brought in a new seventy thousand new bridge on their north end trail system to combine two trail areas where their bridge was wiped out because of decay, forest fires, flooding, just over abuse. We put in a new trail. Now we've got access to the whole north end of the cross-country ski trail system. I think it's called the Ravine Trail. We put that on. This year, we're also, when the snow clears, we're going to grade out the trails, making them more clear, less debris, less dangerous. We're also putting a new north bridge to connect another off-season, another um, another ski area that we want to include. We got new staging areas, because if you do go up there, it's awesome, snowshoeing and cross-country, but there's no signs. We need to put staging areas, we need to educate, we need to make them welcoming, warming huts is another thing we'd like to work on. They're also going to go through a new trail signage expansion. So next year, when you go up and do some cross-country or you do some snowshoeing, you're going to have an amazing set of signs that are going to point you in the right way. Because if you've ever gone in their staging areas up there, just to get started, to find that trailhead can be a challenge at times. Now we're going to have very well-signed. Tour buses. We would like to start providing tours. Not only of Merit, but of our surrounding region, because tourism isn't merit. Tourism is a hundred kilometers around merit. That's our tourism sector. We did digital sign. Everyone's seen that digital sign. Looks great. Looks awesome. Highway billboards, we now have three. We have the only billboard between Hope and Kamloops is now Tourism Nickel Valley. And we're going to put some amazing stuff. It's the old Rock and River sign. If anybody would like to participate in that, please contact, there'll be a white, and she will give you the info. The Moose Academy is an online training library we developed for merit businesses. That will be going on in this month. Now that I'm feeling better and be able to do a little bit more, we're going to get to training. So we're going to start training on content marketing, social media marketing, online marketing, website marketing. And all our members are going to attend, and we're going to tell them everything they need to know to be successful online. And we're going to give them the tools to do it, and they don't have to go out and spend thousands and thousands and thousands of dollars to do it. We're going to teach them the skills to do it. Something that lacks a lot in communities is teaching skills. In our tourism industry, it's apparent, we don't teach enough. We need to teach everybody. Next slide, please. Coming soon in two twenty-five, we have an upgraded interactive experience merit website. It's going to have new content marketing tool, business nonprofit, has your, everyone who's a member has their own page, their own website page, which will have their photos, will have their videos, they'll have their events, they'll have any type of photos, videos, events they want to put up. We'll go onto their page. It'll also get distributed throughout the website. If I go kayaking and I'm at the Grand Pub and Grill, I go kayaking, I put that kayaking picture up, it, Grand Pub and Grill gets the credit, links to her business page, tiles them under restaurant. That kayak photo then goes in the kayak session, kayak se, section. Grand Pub and Grill gets a link, brings them to their business section. If it goes to tours and guides and they click on that photo, goes to Grand Pub and Grill. Everything that they contribute, market your business. None of this Facebook scrolls off the page, never see it again. It's there for the life of your business. We have a specials page. So now when Dana or any business in this room wants to put up some sort of special, they can log on to their, their uh, page and they could put up their specials. The special goes on the website automatically. The specials will also be promoted through social media. The specials will also be going on to a walking app for travelers to see. Everything you add to this website is connected to something. There's not three databases, it's one database. You put it on, it goes on to the app, goes on to the website, then gets promoted on social media. We have volunteer lists, so we all have a problem with non-events where we want volunteers. Now, if you're a volunteer, you put your name on this list. Anyone who has an event, if they're a member, can access the list. Send an email out. Anyone that wants to volunteer could contact that person. One central base for volunteers and businesses can just access it when they need one. Um, the new event scheduler is pretty cool as well. That's going to be something where everyone can come on and put on their events. Their events will be tied into the app, which every traveler is going to download because we have a very aggressive plan this summer. And that's also something that's going to be new and exciting. The downtown walking app, we're pretty stoked on it. It's going to have pre-made tours. This is an opportunity where we could put e-bike tours. This is an opportunity where we can put walking tours. We have a gift store tour on there to get people to go to our tourism place. We have a restaurant guided tour. So they will find Dana when they're around Dana, and they download it and they'll show them how to get to Dana, whether they're walking or they're driving. The Adventure Center, we've been wanting to open this for quite some time, but there have been some things that we won't discuss here, but have held us back. But it will be coming. And in it, there's a new boardroom. It's going to have a new online booking system. It's going to have local products. It's going to have all the literature we can gather. It's going to have TV screens showing off snowmobile, mountain biking, the rodeo. So when somebody comes in there, they're going to walk out educated, they're going to walk out with, hopefully booked in a hotel room and hopefully booked to do something and in our attractions. That's how we get two to three days out of them. We are going to get them to stay two or three days because they're not going to have a choice. It's going to be the tourism death trap for travelers. Next slide, please. Some of you might have not, not been here around, but Tourism Nickel Valley has done a great job and they have been recognized for it. We might not be getting the recognition we would like to see in the city of Merit, but we are getting the recognition outside, outside our borders. Even we're getting recognition around the world. The city of Merit is fortunate that we have a group of volunteers that are working very hard to put Merit on the map. When you look back at tourism, the past fifteen years in the Nickel Valley and view the results, there's been a little to show. Tourism is a lot more than bags, pens and buttons. Way more. And that's where marketing dollars can change the outcome of tourism in this town. We've had seven tourism reports done in this community, sitting on a shelf somewheres. We've had tourists, two city tourism managers. The results speak for themselves. We do not call up a plumber when we need a lawyer. What we need is tourism specialists, tourism enthusiasts, tourism strategists that know what they're doing, that take their skillset, that are volunteering their skillset to build an industry that can really, really boost merit. Work along with your need for doctors and nurses. Help us make merit beautiful and wonderful and fun, and we'll help you with your economic development. Here's a quick reminder what tourism professionals, people who work in the industry think about. In this here, in two thousand and twenty-one, the Census B C said there's a hundred and eighteen communities under twenty thousand population. Out of a hundred and eighteen communities, Merit was one, the best economic development community project award for communities under twenty thousand by the B C E D A. That is not a Mickey Mouse organization. That is the British Columbia Economic Development Association. It's a leading organization in British Columbia for economic development. It provides resources, training and identifies communities that have gone above and beyond what is necessary. This was done when a lot of communities rolled over and died during COVID. We didn't. We built programs. We worked on physical assets. We went after grant money. We talked to every nonprofit we could, every group we could. What do you need? What do you want? How do we get there? Dale Wielden, and I think probably Mike knows him, probably Chris, I know Melvina does. The B C Economic Development Association president sent us an email and here's what he said. The B C E Day has given these awards to men. The B C E Day has given these awards to individuals who have dedicated their time to community-based economic development. These awards recognize outstanding work in supporting their local economies and make a meaningful difference in the communities. Out of a hundred and eighteen communities, under twenty thousand, Merritt won this award. Not tourism Nickel Valley. I don't believe in that. Everything we do is merit. It's not the city. It's not this association. It's not this association. Merritt won this award. Next, please. In the summer of two thousand twenty-two, this was one that blew us away. T N V was recognized two times. Merritt was recognized two times in the Federal House of Commons in Ottawa, Canada. Yes, the Federal House of Commons in Ottawa, Canada, Merritt was featured. Dan Elvis raised the program in the house as an example of a community taking action during COVID. Then the official tourism critic at the time, Blake Richards of Banff. So you know, he knows tourism. He's from Banff. He sent us, a federal conservative party sent a T N V a certificate of excellence for our work. We didn't ask for it. We didn't expect it. It just arrived in the mail that the tourism critic at the federal. Here's what they said, and here's what he, this he said, "We have created a winning focus on showcasing all the beauty and splendor that your region has to offer to an audience that has spanned the globe." Tourism Nicholas won many awards. We've been featured in B C Business Magazine. We've been featured on the global TV. We've been featured on an Australian podcast saying, "Look at this, this community's innovative initiative on marketing tourism." We were featured on a United Kingdom TV show. Look at this community in Canada. Look what they're doing. Look how they're marketing tourism and they're doing it on a low budget. Two thousand twenty-four, the British Columbia Snowmobile Federation provided an excellence award to tourism promotion for developing snowmobile. So out of all of B C, Merritt was recognized for developing the snowmobile industry in this community by the British Columbia Snowmobile Federation. Two thousand twenty-four Tourism Information Platform of the Year. And I could go on and on and on and on. But what I'm trying to say here, tourism Nickel Valley is no joke. We have immense skill set. We have immense, immense experience. Myself, I've researched over a thousand and twenty-three communities in this country. It took me fifteen years, but I did it with my brother. I can tell you anything, almost anything about any small community on what works and what doesn't. But we don't get phone calls. We don't get asked. Why? We don't want to take your job. We don't want to hurt anyone's feelings. We're here for merit. That's what we're all here for, is merit. Next slide, please. Coming together is the beginning. Staying together is a process, a progress and working together is success. Henry Ford said that when he started the Ford Motor Company. Strong partnerships drive progress, foster innovation and create lasting impact. Tourism Nickel Valley has worked really hard in two years establishing partnerships. We are now working closely with seventeen different associations. Two years ago, it was two. We are now working with the B C Hotel Association, T I A, Tourism Industry Association of Canada, Tourism Association of British Columbia, T O D A, Merritt Speedway, Tourism Association B C, Thompson Oak Canal, B C Snowmobile Federation. Seventeen groups we are now working with, talking with, working together and figuring out how we can elevate the tourism marketing, the tourism industry in Merritt and the Nickel Valley. Next, please. Having a plan turns vision into access and sets a clear path. I've been here for six, seven years. Mel will correct me if I'm wrong. She always does. How many years am I here? Seven years? Okay. One on eight, proudly going on eight. Planning without execution is just theory. I'm going to say that again. Planning without execution is just theory. At the last count, the city of Merritt has paid over a hundred and fifty thousand for seven plans since two thousand five. We haven't touched anything in those plans. One point five million spent in ten years in tourism and economic development. We have to ask ourselves, are we getting our bang for our buck? And yet we want to make more reports. Our tax dollars are producing little results. The R I is low and is nonmeasurable prior to two thousand and two. We spend, we spend, we spend. Why? When we are so fortunate to have people in this community who care about this community, who have extensive knowledge. I look around this room and I could tell you right now, there's enough experience, enough knowledge in this room to turn things around. Tons. I can look at every one of you and I have a great idea of your strengths. You all bring skills. If we can finally put all our skills in one bucket, no one's going to touch us. I see some in our audience today that are exceptional people. I see people in our audience who would give their left arm for Merritt to be where they want it to be. I do not believe we are capitalizing on the skill set of this community. I think we undermine our skill sets in this community. I don't think we give it enough credit of the skill sets. We have entrepreneurs. We have a whole bunch of people here who have started with nothing and built a great, great life for them, a great business for them. Worked their butts off for a nonprofit, come here after they retire and continue to work. Are we using those assets? Are we dipping into that pool of experience? No. A well-structured marketing plan will define goals and strategy. It will target the right au- audience. It will optimize resources. It'll build brand recognition. It'll measure successes and adjusts. Without marketing plan, businesses risk operating blindly, missing opportunities and struggling to sustain long-term success. Tourism Nickel Valley has marketing plans. We have a summer and we have a winter. We go through it every year. We have an action steps in every single one of these things at the back. Who's, who's responsible and a date. Yes, it's done. Yes, it's done. No, it isn't. Move it on to the next year. Why wasn't it done? So we don't make the same mistake twice. We have a winter one and a summer. Name anyone else in this region who is as well organized, as well focused and who has action steps to get things done. Name another one and I can't think of it. Every March and April, we go through these things and we go the next year. What do we need to do? How do we get it? What are our obstacles? What are the trends? Where's the funding going to come from? Where's the skill set going to come from? We discuss it to the last degree. T N V has a plan. Regardless of what anyone else says, we have a very, very good plan. Next slide, please. So understanding the challenges tourism Nickel Valley faces is essential for developing effective solutions, improving infrastructure, creating open communication channels and building sustainable strategies. Not a one-shot, one-year shot in the dark. Long-term, ten years, sustainable strategy. Next side, please. A city that plays together stays together. Lack of open communication channels with local government can lead to fragmented relationships and duplication of efforts. We've all seen that. Respecting our backyard, the city deals with city issues. And we respect you for it. We know it's not easy and man, you guys put in long hours. T N V deals with tourism. Anything tourism should include T N V. I don't understand the difficulty of understanding that. Anything city should include the city. You're the experts. We're not going to come and infringe on what you guys do because you're the experts in that. But you know what? We're the experts in tourism. Everybody stays on their side of the fence. Everyone established what we're doing, what you're doing. And we talk to each other. Then there's no duplication. There's no mismanagement of funding. There's no wrong directions in what we're working on to improve. The lack of communication between the city and T N V creates mixed messages and branding confusion. All you got to do is go talk to the people of commu- in the community. I've talked to hundreds. I'm sure Dennis talked to hundreds. I'm sure Paul has. I'm sure Manuel has. An example is the visitor information services in the community. You go to the city, they tell them what they think for tourism. You go to us, we tell them what they think for tourism. You go to Bailey Hills, they get a different story. We're all on a different page. What we need to do and what we should be doing is deciding on our brand and everyone sticks to the story. Marketing materials coming out late August ain't going to cut it. Every time I've been here, we get marketing materials in August. Last time I checked, summer tourism starts in May. First there was Will George, then there was Marilyn. Both working in tourism in the city. Both were undermining T N V. That's got to stop. I'm out in the public. I'm supporting the city. Yep, yep.
We just had someone that we liked is just saying. I'm actually finding this is a, I mean, I'd say workplace, should I stop? Based on.
What?
Can we uh? And we will continue on. We can, uh, as council, it's our decision to make the decisions.
So we're not supposed to discuss challenges?
Uh, like I said, Greg, continue. It's council's decision. We give staff decision which ways we go. No, no, let, you know what? Let's finish. Okay. Because ultimately it comes down to the fact that the ultimately comes down to the fact that council makes decisions whether staff is here or not. So let's continue with the thing and we'll continue on. Okay. And we'll make decisions from there. Well, actually, it's a call meeting, so we make no decisions. This is a call meeting.
Yep.
But uh, continue on.
There was no disrespect to the city. What we're trying to do is find how to fix things, how to move forward together. And I'm sorry that this is the result because that's not what it's meant to me. But if we're not, if we're not going to be grownups in the room and discuss what we need to do to get to the next step, then we have a problem. Brand development requires consistency and, and uh, community collaboration. Next one, please. Putting tourism in the hands of T and T N V reduces the inefficiency that we can have. We can have long-term tourism goals. We could put everything together on a tourism plan, on a ten-year and make it happen. Perception is reality. Next one, please. Inefficient use of funding and resources. Without strong partnership, tourism funds will be spent on initiatives that we believe will get us to move forward. This can result in underwhelming marketing campaigns if we don't combine our resources, use our skill sets and help everyone move forward. Now I'm going to pass it on to Amber, who will be discussing some of the things that we will be discussing. And I wrote through the last bit because I am not here to offend anybody. I am not here to disrespect anybody. I'm here because I care about Merritt. I've done this long enough that if I can't point out things I think we need to fix, well, then we're in big trouble.
I'll uh, I'll skip a few slides. Um, thanks, Greg. I I always feel like, oh, like he's got so much energy and then I'm coming in like, oh, so anyway, I'll, I'll try. So sorry, I won't be as entertaining. Um. You know, it, it's an interesting thing and I'm going to segue just a little bit. I, I know that this whole tourism, economic development has a huge emotional attachment. It does for me as well. Um, just so everybody knows, we're clear. I actually left Merritt in twenty twelve because of what happened at referendum. I was actually punched by a person in an audience. And I said, I can't do it anymore. I need to take a break. And it was actually Melvina that said to me, come back and, and we'll work. And we started, um, I started working with Tourism Nickel Valley and I'm really passionate about it. Um, I know Simone from T O D A, same thing. They, they experienced something similar and T O D A wouldn't talk to uh, people in Merritt for quite a while. I went out and held the olive branch to Simone and said, listen, if I can come back, you can too. So it's, it's highly emotional and it's an interesting thing because there's, there is actually a simple solution. And, and it goes back to that equation. It, it's not that it's, it's not achievable. It actually is. I believe what Greg was trying to point out, and he did it well, is just that there is a lack of connection between the city municipality in which it, and, and no one's pointing fingers because it's not a particular, it's not a point finger thing. It's just, there's, there's this disconnect. And, and it, when it happened in twenty eleven, twelve, we saw what hap- what Greg was talking about, that things, things were not smooth, but they can be. And it's not about, it's not necessarily about money. It's not necessarily about who knows what and all that stuff. It's been, and who's, who's more experienced or more important. It's more about creating that collaborative trust that, that somehow fell apart. And from someone that's been around for the evolution of this for a long, long time, I've been working in this. It is an interesting place. And so people getting emotional actually is probably a good thing because it, it shows that people still have passion and Cynthia and, and her staff and, and as well as Greg and and the rest of the folks back here who have, who have contributed in many ways. So the solution, I'm going to go to, to what I feel is at least the first step in the solution. So again, looking at that, that equation, consistency, community, collaboration. And when Greg was speaking about, you can, you can switch. And when Greg was speaking about, um, what's been happening in the last five years and he talks about the stages, I think what's really important is that there is a continuity, even if it kind of broke up a little bit. T N V built on that continuity, right? So we were the country music capital of Canada. We were also, for those, I don't know that if anybody knows that, we're also the bird watching capital of Canada. We're also the, the night, the night sky capital of Canada. Um, I understand we might not have the country music piece anymore, but that was a really cool thing because you know what? It doesn't matter where there's country music. It, it's a whole country, you know, and I, when I am in the city, because I, I have one foot in the city still and I come to Merritt and I say, I'm coming, I'm going home. And I said, well, where's home? And I say, Merritt. And they say, oh, and I said, yeah, you know, it's country. I, I come back here and I pull up my cowboy boots and I'm like, not really cowboy, but I, you know, I love it here. I, I'm passionate. When I see those rolling hills, those grasslands, I'm like, I am home. And then it's a place that, that, you know, I, I feel again, that emotion that we all felt right now is because we love it here. And we may have different, slightly different ideas about what that looks like. But there's a way to bring that vision together and I've seen it. So what I wanted to talk about is the first step. And I think the first step is to formalize. So what I wanted to talk about is the first step. And I think the first step is to formalize the MOU that the city had a directive, council had a directive at the time in twenty twenty-three. I know that the previous, I don't know, I think Sean was previous C A O, him and I worked tirelessly in his office late into Friday nights, trying to figure out how we were gonna make this happen. And, um, it came to council a few times, twenty nineteen and then COVID. It waited to get till twenty twenty-three. But the MOU hasn't been formalized. And part of that is, you know, just again, just changes. So I feel strongly that the reason why that needs to happen is it will define the rules of what the city does versus what T and V does. It'll define funding and resources. So all those seventeen partners that, that T and V has worked so tirelessly to bring together. Those folks have not only experience and time, but they have access to grants that city doesn't have grants access to, that T and V doesn't have access to. But together in a pool, we can access those funds. We can make downtown a fantastic place. We were that close to it in twenty eleven. The other thing it can do is define representation. I think Greg's, um, suggested a bit of frustration there. And just who's, who's representing what when they go to a trade show? Or go to, you know, uh, a municipal event. Who, who's, who's representing who and who's being invited to those things? So there's no crossover. And finally, there's acknowledgement in a respectful way about the expertise that each group brings. An MOU is not a contract. And, um, I believe I helped write a draft of an MOU, it was very loose. And it went back and forth between city staff and T and V. And, uh, it came back a little different than we had anticipated, certainly T and V. And I'm not gonna speak too much about that, because Melvina may want to. But what it, it isn't, it's not about the MRDT. And it's not about a tourism service agreement. When Sean and I met originally, so the intent of the MOU when we first met was that this, we'd get the destination marketing organization set up. That we would take that piece out of, out of the city's responsibility and move it into T and V. And I think the reason why they want that part of that, even though Sean and I hadn't articulated it, was because we were looking for that equation to be put back in. So part of it is consistency. Organizations, especially the ones when you look at at that seventeen partners that are part of T and V, including the Walk of Stars. The Walk of Stars was a really big organization in terms of the, the work that they did, but they collaborated and they moved a big part of their board into T and V. So that continuity and that memory continues. Because I think part of that emotion, you know, Cynthia, you know, is doing a fantastic job. She was brought in without memory. And because of that disconnect between T and V and the city, she didn't have that memory. She didn't know that there's been I don't know how many, you know, marketing plans and economic development plans and that, you know, urban systems was here and the city spent so much time and resources with an economic group, building what downtown should look like. In fact, we had a presentation here and it was beautiful. It, it, it went back to the history of merit. You forget country, if you will, but my merit is country. I mean, the first time I walked down the street and this is no lie, there are tumbleweeds going down the street of merit. And I can remember going back to Vancouver when I was nineteen going, they actually had tumbleweeds in cowboys. Like there was people walking by, you know, and, and we are country. So I mean, you know, Greg talked about losing culture. We we are, I mean, we can change it. You know, we've got a fantastic history within our indigenous culture. You know, and, and all of that needs to be celebrated and not forgotten. And so when new people come, having a consistent organization to share that memory in a relationship with the city that's in a MOU or contract, whatever it turns into is so important, because then the city can say, oh, no, no, we go talk to T and V. Or, you know, whatever entity it becomes. And it's not to say that the vision can't change, because the vision can change. We were the country music capital of Canada. And you know what? That was the opportunity. We jumped on it. We had I forget, Rockin River, and then before that there is yes, right. And, um, we jumped on it. We had the handprints, we had the stars. And we, we jumped on it. We kept going. And T and V has taken that country and continued on. The whole lake day, as long as you stay, that's, that's a fantastic brand. And we should still keep it. Because that's who we are. You know, lakes, fish, country, canoeing, that all goes together. And I think so if we can, if we can continue to look at that equation, the first step is the MOU. And that's a call, that's a collaborative conversation. What we'll do is we'll establish collaboration. Community, which by community, I mean, isn't just buy-in, it's the collective memory. The consistency that we need, because if we can do that, we will save time, we will save money. We will channel that emotion into something positive. So thank you very much.
I'm gonna jump back in here just real quick. Thank you so much for your, uh, time, patience and understanding. These folks are here to answer your questions if you have any. Uh, Melvina, Greg and Amber will all come back up to the podium and be prepared for your, for your questions or whatever you have. Questions, anyone?
Thank you. So, um, I remember one conversation I had, um, with Travis. I'm not sure if you recall. When you called me and, and you asked me why I was running for, for council. And one of those, um, content of this conversation was that I felt that there were so many silos, so many silos, uh, organizations in the city. So, um, for many years, working with the local community features office, I experienced the challenges. Instead of working together, I experienced that barrier for some reason. And the idea, I needed to do something about it. I said, I'm gonna be running because I want to be able to facilitate that collaboration amongst all these organizations. Because we are not gonna be doing that on our own. We can achieve more, we can achieve greatness, but it's going to take time. It's going to take commitment and we need to work together. Um, when I review sometimes agenda items, I feel that they, instead of coming up with solutions, sometimes I feel like they are coming up with issues, why we should not this project, why we should not, uh, you know, think about liability issues. Instead of that, I wish we can find a way that we can work together. So this is easy. When we are talking about economic development, we are talking about what we expect and we don't know. We don't know if we are talking about, uh, we should go with a consultant or we should go with, uh, in-house economic development. Here is different. This is tangible. When we go back to five years, we can see what this organization has achieved. It's not that, okay, they are coming with a proposal. This is what we want to achieve in five years. This is what we are going to do that. We can go back and see tangibles. And that's what I like about that one. So I, there was some concerns by, uh, by counselors. When we discussed the MOU, I said, the MOU is just a piece of paper stating who is doing what. It's not legal paper. It's just to have a good understanding. That is, and again, and it still is in my mind, the first step forward. So but let's not talk about, uh, financial assistance. Let's not talk about MRDT. Let's not talk about all that one. This is a document that we are stating, or we are recognizing, we have already assigna- um, provide that designation to T and V as our destination marketing organization. So we have to find a way in this piece of paper. Your simple, it can be one page, two pages, that's all what we need, just to state how the collaboration is gonna be working.
Counselor Petrosi.
Thanks, Greg and Amber, for, uh, your presentation and, uh, what you've achieved so far, Greg. I appreciate it. And, um, I echo, uh, Counselor Ogan's comments too about the MOU. So, uh, thank you very much. And, um, there you go. Thank you.
I'm going to also echo as well, because I don't really think at this point, I mean, we, with everything that you have all said here tonight, we can see that there's, there's tangible results already. So I just, I don't know how we cannot move forward. That's just my thinking out loud voice. Um, but I'm, I'm really going to be interested to hear what the rest of the council has to say. Thank you very much for your presentation. I thought it was very well done.
Yep, just give me a second. So Greg, you know that, I think I was in about a month and we had a conversation. And I told you straight out that the city has been absolutely horrific at tourism. And we always have been. We, we have never been able to get the tourism ship off the ground. And, and you know that. And I came to you saying, what can we do to move this directional forward? Now, you pointed out some issues with us tonight, and there's also been issues with your crew, crew as we move forward. And that's to be expected. It's the way it is. But we still realize that, uh, tourism is important to the community. And we still realize that we need, uh, because how many times did I phone you up and say, hey, this guy wants to put on an event, here you go. Fly fishing, the world fly fishing. Talk to you about that. You guys ran with it. So that's where we, we need to be. So I think what we have a sticking point here is the fact that MOU or a, a service agreement. That's where we're stuck at. And I think that's what council has to decide and talk about and figure out what's gonna work best for them. Um, and MOU is great, but there's no budget with an MOU. So the work agreement is to cover what we would like to see, because to be honest with you, we're employing you. You're gonna be working for us. And we need to have a relationship where we come back and forth. Some of the things you may suggest, we may not agree with. Some of the things we suggest, you may not agree with. So, I mean, the point of the matter is, is how can we move, move the community forward? Oh, I, I hundred percent understand that. And you've also got to understand, we're still in a rebuilding phase and sometimes our, our lens focuses on other areas. And, and that's where we go. But the, we wouldn't be talking about this if we didn't really want this to move along and happen. And, you know, Melvina, I'm excited that your phone hasn't gone off tonight, so you don't, don't owe me a dollar. Thank you. Uh, and I, I'm just, I'm just putting it out there that, um, we know for a fact that we have not been good at tourism. And, and there's no, no objection here. You'll never hear that from me. Uh, it's never worked. We've had out of scope, in scope, back out of scope again, and it just has not worked. So we are looking for what we can do to make this better. Uh, Counselor Ogan again.
So, uh, correct me if I am wrong. I don't think that we have to decide between the MOU and the service agreement. In my mind, it is the step number one, the MOU. Once that's been done, then it's gonna be a step number two or three, um, the service agre- agreement. We will get to that part. But right now, to start this, moving forward, it's the MOU, correct?
Yes.
Yes.
While it's, while it is related, it's not the same. So having the MOU with T and V is an employment contract is actually a partnership. I think that's a really important point. And then if you move into the tourism service agreement, the mathematical contract and the MRDT may have not be related.
Counselor Churney.
I'd like to thank you for that presentation. I think it was excellent, it's well thought out. Um, and there were a lot of things that I didn't realize that T and V has done in the past. So it was very enlightening for me to hear that. And I think that to go forward, we have to have a lot of collaboration, which I think is possible. I think this council is very open to collaborating with you. Um, I think the MOU has to be looked at, signed, and not down the road in the very near future. I think it's the very first step and we have to get it done. And our colla- collaboration, and as Amber says, we need a partnership. We have to work together, not against each other. We have to work together. I think that's very important. So again, thank you for that excellent presentation.
Um, I just wanna say about the MOU, uh, the MOU is a starting point. Probably would only last a couple of months or three months, but it would give us all, give us both direction as to, uh, as to where we're going. Um, the idea of the MOU was discussion. But we never had an opportunity to discuss it. We just got it back with a whole bunch of stuff crossed out and, uh, twelve or thirteen-page service agreement that there was no discussion about. So, yeah, I, in order for us to move forward, we need to know where we stand and, and the city needs to know where they stand. Right now, the, um, I mean, we had a, I have a letter from you where you directed, um, the, uh, Tourism Merit website to come over to T and V. That has never happened. Now, that, anything that's going on that, uh, Tourism Merit website is being directed to the civic center. And so it's, I mean, we've got so many mixed messages out there, like, are we doing this or aren't we doing this? Or, or what's going on? So that's why the MOU, then we can go into the, the serious stuff of of funding and whatever else comes on, or whatever else the city wants to see. At least then we can have discussions between T and V and the city and come to an agreement that's gonna be happy, satisfy everybody, so we can move on and do our thing. That's all I have to say.
So I'm here representing, uh, the Merit Snowmobile Club. And, uh, we wouldn't be able to, to have our groomed trails without the help of T and V. I went and had a meeting with Greg, uh, a couple of years ago, and he came to me and said, hey, what, what are their top three things that you need? I said, our, our group cannot fund having, uh, a new groomer or a new to us groomer put into the fleet. And, uh, we were lucky enough to get a grant that allowed us to get two new to us groomers. And, uh, you know, right?
Pardon?
Uh, yeah, so the story on them is they were, um, backup units to the X Games, uh, that were completely gone through by the factory, um, and they never used. So they were completely, as soon as they come off the truck here, put the tracks on, put the blade on, put the tiller on, go to work. And unfortunately, last year was a low snow year, but this year was the first time we've ever had a snowcat to the top of Thine Mountain at sixty-five hundred feet. Um, none of our other groomers have made it there. We've never cleaned up the trail to get up there before. This was the first year for that. Um, and in fact, we have a third groomer, which is a parts groomer. And the reason for that is these, these machines come from Germany and parts to get from there are long. And if you have a breakdown, then we have every part that we need, other than track and a tiller and blade. So yeah, huge, huge part there. And we have the ability to be the next Rubblestone. We have the infrastructure with hotels. We have the infrastructure with trails out there. We have so much more riding area than Rubblestone does. That's untouched. Like, I can go out and see, you know, ten people in the parking lot, and I don't see them all day, because there, we have the terrain to go play in. Um, I was just at, uh, Hunter's Range in Kelowna. They had three hundred riders attend their bingo ride, um, on Sunday. And, uh, support their community and hotels and fuel and food. I can attest to that. I spent over six hundred and forty dollars in just going there and attending and, and donating my time and energy to that, that club. And I was just one person with my son. You can do that here. Um, we just had our ladies' ride, uh, at the beginning of January, and we had, uh, thirty-seven ladies come. They didn't just come on their own. They brought their boyfriends, they brought their husbands, they brought their kids, they brought their bosses. You know, and we had over seven people in the parking lot, ready to go hit the trails at minus fifteen. We don't, we've never had, that was our first ladies' ride. We'd never done it before. We'd done our chili ride, we've done all the other rides like that. Um, we're able to put our events up on the new board. Um, in fact, the two ladies that I put the photo up, uh, on the board there, they actually came for our ladies' ride. So they took their selfie in front of the photo of themselves on the boards, and that made it on the socials, right? So the amount of social stuff that gets out there with T and V sharing our stuff, um, just this season alone, looking back at our stats, we had two hundred and thirty thousand hits on our Facebook page since the beginning of October uh, to today. So that just goes to show you just our little reach. Never mind whatever T and V goes and pushes out, um, of our stuff that gets sent out. So. You think? Sorry, go ahead.
This isn't to do with snowmobiling, but be, or maybe it does, but I don't know if you're old enough to remember that we used to actually have a ski hill here in Merritt.
I remember the one up at, uh, Lacklajun. That's, I only
No, there was another one up Hamilton Hill.
Okay.
Like you had to go, I can't remember.
Well, there's also, there's also one at the Aspen Plain, uh, Aspen Grove Turnoff. You can still see the tower.
Yeah, it was, it was, it wasn't quite as far as Aspen Grove.
It's past, it's past Kane Lake. You can still see the tower. The tower's still there.
I'm just wondering if it's big enough to develop.
So Simon, I got a question for you. Like, we've talked, I, I'm a Muskoka free rider junkie and all those guys, right?
Hundred percent.
So I noticed when they show up to sites in Rebelstoke and stuff, they do the avalanche ping and they make sure people have their training. Do you guys make sure that happens before people get on your trails or can anybody just show up and go?
In, in fact, at our Thine Mountain location, we have a beacon checker that was put in place. We also have one up at twenty-four K. They're solar powered. Our, actually our person at the Brookmere parking lot turns on the beacon every day just to try to save power because low sun over the winter. But we do have two of them out there. We in fact have three webcams, one at the top of Thine, one in the C Can out at forty K, up at Honeymoon and one in the parking lot. Which one allows us to watch every ten minutes, they all take photos and goes right to our website. So allows us to watch over two of our groomers at Thine for security reasons. We've actually been approached by several other clubs and I've actually helped Hunter's Range put up their newest one with a mini sat with the webcam there. How are you doing what we do? We are being approached by the Federation that is part of sixty other clubs that, hey, how, how, like I've, I've done presentations at the AGMs in Bernie. And again, I'm sure I'll be asked lots at this next one coming up in a couple of weeks down in Squamish, how do you do what you do? Because we are up there. We have more webcams than Rebelstoke does, right? We have one more webcam than Rebelstoke does.
Do the riders sign any kind of a rider or anything like that in case they get hurt? Like, I mean, if somebody got damaged, would you guys be responsible for their?
No, everybody signs a waiver or your day pass has a waiver on the back of it, you're tied into that. Your membership has a same thing with PCSF. There is an insurance that is covered for any events that we have with PCSF. And, but my biggest point was, we would not be in the position that we are in currently with. At the time, till two weeks ago, we actually had five snowcats. We just currently sold one to a snowmobile club up in Clearwater. Because we, we didn't need five, right? It was the one that was giving us our most problems and they had a spare, they had an identical twin to it. So they're like, hey, we're gonna take this on as a project. So. But yeah, our two snowcats, when I go out with my son in it, I don't have to worry about not getting home at the end of the day. Especially when we leave at midnight and get home at eight o'clock in the morning. So it's, it's definitely peace of mind when we have these things. Anything else for me?
Nope, not unless you got some. Anyone else? Come on. Oh, Travis, can't not step up to the mic.
Evening, Mayor and Council. Thank you for this opportunity. I think it was important and needed. Jordan had to go, but I think he'd echo a lot of the same things that Simon said about the position that TNV and Experienced Nickel Valley have, have put the sport in and all of the improvements that have been made. One thing that I wanted to say personally is that I've made it clear, I think, to council that I thought the MRDT was something that had to happen as a result of, of a DMO. But listening to everything that's been said here, I, I can see now how that's, you know, not as much of a priority as it is, you know, letting, letting these folks do their work. Cause they've been carrying the ball now for eight years and it takes a lot to keep that, that energy going. And they, you know, they've never shown any sign of giving up. So it's, it's impressive. And I, I think there, there's a lot of good things come with that. So that's, that's it. Thanks.
Mayor and Council, thanks again for having us and, you know, when we talk about economic development. I think the best economic development you can do is by making this town sexy. And you attract people, you attract people that really wanna be here and have fun. And even for the existing community, and again, it's the communication aspect of it is so important. Like let the city know of these amenities. And maybe we'll get kids off their iPads and out on the bike trails. Thank you.
Greg?
One thing I would like to add is that with all our grant money, we have bought ninety percent of the equipment for our trail upgrades through Travis. We supported his business. We didn't go outside of Merritt to get bikes, to get ramps, to get tools at their staging area, to build our staging signs was done by a Merritt company. To build our lamination, done by a Merritt company. Building our print materials, done by a Merritt company. Some of our snowmobile structures, we bought through Merritt companies. So any opportunity that TNV has had in the past with any type of grant money, our first priority, shop local. And I think that's important. Thank you.
Anyone else? Oh man, well, sorry.
So I just want to make sure that everything is clear here and that's why I am bringing this forward. In the past, there was a few concerns and I want right now that I, we have you guys here, I want you to address those concerns. One of the concerns that was brought to us, it was that there was some kind of duplicity in the services provided by TNV and Chamber of Commerce. And I'm glad to see a few people from the Chamber of Commerce. So what would you have to say about that? Because I, that was one of the concerns that was raised here. And the other one, I would like to understand more about there is fine lines between what one organization does with the other. And we have Community Futures here and they also do community economic development. We have Chamber of Commerce here and we all day support businesses as well as Tourism Nickel Valley that are providing that one. What is the relationship that we, TNV has with these organizations that are working together and working on these fine lines towards, you know, the betterment of the city of Merritt?
I, they do this to me, actually. So this is how this started, that Melvina said, hey, could you help us organize, you know, the, the presentation? And then pretty soon I was, and I was part of it. It's a really good question, Manuel. And those late nights that Sean and I spent Friday night, we did, we, we spent a few nights up there trying to figure out how we're gonna do this. As the conversation was, how do we? Lack of, this is my analogy, how do we keep everybody in the swim lanes? You know, it's like, we all share the pool, but we all have to be in our swim lanes, we're not bonking into each other. And I believe Sean tried a few things in bringing the, the groups together, et cetera, et cetera. With Tourism Nickel Valley, and, and I, I sat on to, on the chamber up until recently, I had surgery, so I had to bow out for a bit. But I think when, what happened with TNV is they picked up where the chamber wasn't there for a while. And, and then moved into that direction of, of ensuring that businesses were covered. And, and there is definitely some crossover between what you would consider, you know, chamber, economic development and tourism. And I think just like this conversation we have tonight about that equation, that equation needs to be put in place with those groups as well. So that consistency and collaboration communication needs to come together. And each group felt strongly about the work that they're doing. And, and, and clearly, they have specific mandates and those just need to be recognized. So I think from a perspective of TNV, there's an openness, especially now, to, to try to figure out how to do that collaboration. I don't, I don't think we have the answer right now. I think it requires all the groups coming together and having a really succinct conversation. But I, just before I go, because now I have my, I think one of the most important pieces, and again, I'm gonna just go back to where Sean and I were talking about it, because that's what brought in this MOU and this whole conversation, was we agreed that in order for this to succeed, it needs to be led by the city. I don't think it's the responsibility of the groups because it needs to be led by example. So if there is an MOU and you folks have determined with TNV exactly what those swim lines, lanes look like between the city swimming along and then TNV swimming along, then we just need to make sure that those other two groups are brought into that conversation as well. And, and I think there's a whole bunch of openness to that. I think that that silo-ness that we all feel and, and it, it, that's kind of historical, it's been around for a long time, is fear, right? Fear that I'm not gonna get the resource and I'm not gonna get the recognition or whatever it might be. But I think that applying that, that equation, as simply as it is, it's more simple than it looks. But is, it is possible to do that with all the other groups as well.
Well, I think it's, for myself, the difference between TNV and Chamber is TNV brings people here, Chamber keeps them here. That's the job, right?
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely. And, and you know, the Chamber filled, I mean, when I first moved to Merritt, there wasn't really, the Chamber was doing tourism, actually. The city had, had a contract and maybe you folks remember that, but the, the Chamber actually was responsible for tourism.
That was Deanne Parody.
No, she was CFDC, so she was Economic Development.
Been so many.
She had, she had like one foot here and in the city and one foot
Yeah, it was.
over at CFDC.
And like I've said to Greg, I've been very honest that we have not done a great job at tourism. And I honestly believe it's something we should not be involved in because we don't do a great job of it. I think our, Greg pointed out to me that our website hadn't been updated in three years. So that's a problem, right? So the, for me, the job of the city is to do the job of the city and use partners to do the other things.
Absolutely.
Nobody wants a city that is, I must have everything, because we simply can't do everything right. It's just not gonna work. And I, I, one of the things that I'm very happy about myself is I know when I'm in over my head or when I'm not supposed to be in that spot. So I make myself get away from that spot as quickly as possible because I don't have any business being there. I'm just gonna screw things up. So I've been very clear right from the start that TNV is what we need in the community and that we need, you know, we're, we're stuck on the MOU. So, you know, I, I guess council will, again, Cal, we don't make any decisions here. We just talk about things. And, you know, we have to have a, a conversation on this as well. But I've, I would love to be able to hand things to TNV and just simply walk away. That's where I would be happy.
Yeah, and before I step down, I, you know, the Chamber and CFDC also play very important roles. So I, not the blue side of that.
Of course it is.
Of course, yeah.
Anybody else?
One thing, two, two, my question about chambers and tourism separates, chambers within city limits and TNV is outside.
Yeah, you're right.
So we're responsible for bringing everything outside in. Like Mayor said, Chamber is responsible for satisfying and maintaining awareness of players. That, that's really nice fine defense.
Yep. Lenora? I see you waving way back there.
Thanks for that, it's okay. I'm Lenora Fletcher. I'm with Community Futures. I am the chair there for the ones who aren't aware who I am. And as noted, that we are involved in community economic development and want to continue to be involved. But we recognize to do it effectively, you have to do it in a partnership. So we work strongly with TNV and we plan to work strongly with the city and anyone else who has an interest in it. And that's why we're here today, is to show that commitment towards that. That's all I wanted to say. Thank you.